I have to leave shortly before nine and then I'll be back 20 minutes later.
Thank you.
Drop off the chair at the camp.
All right. I've never hit this before.
You're a busy gal, aren't you?
It's kind of quiet.
Oh, okay.
Good morning.
I really need it in the event.
Fair enough.
And even the audience, I don't foresee you will need to use it to either call things to order or end a meeting.
My only feedback, Dave, is if you're going to pick that up, do it with purpose. Don't be timid.
That's my nature.
Should I duck?
Yeah.
I'm with arms.
Yeah, but we made you the chair, buddy. Come on.
Heavy hammer.
You might become one of the good commissioners.
I'll keep. If that's what it takes, you know.
Easy.
Good, good morning. I'd like to call this meeting to order of the regular Board of the Cook County Commissioners on Tuesday, July 27th at 8:32 a.m. Please rise and join us in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda this morning? Doesn't look like it. I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. I have a motion.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And the first item, or the second rather, is a proclamation for County Staff Appreciation Day. And this was a proclamation made by Governor Walz and with, I think, with some asks from our partners with AMC and I think Commissioner Rich Sfee was integral with that. And I'll just like to read that. Whereas county staff serve as the cornerstone of this community, dedicating their time, skills, and expertise for the benefit of their neighbors. And whereas county staff went beyond expectations, taking on personal risks to continue delivering essential services to the citizens of our county during COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas, in addition to their regular duties, many county staff were called upon and accepted new and challenging responsibilities during the pandemic, such as expediting the distribution of thousands of dollars in economic recovery appropriations, empowering the survival of our local business community, successfully managing a deluge of mail-in ballots in an unprecedented federal election, and retooling local public health education outreach to flatten the curve. And whereas, although the state has turned the corner on the COVID-19 pandemic, county staff continue their exemplary work assisting with recovery through vaccination rollouts and preparing for the American Rescue Plan's multi-year recovery effort. And whereas, the work of county staff over the past year and a half have kept the doors of the county open and our community safer, healthier, and productive throughout months of unprecedented global transition. And whereas President Sfee and the Board of the Association of Minnesota Counties requested the Office of Governor Walz and Lieutenant Governor Flanagan to proclaim July 27th, 2021, as County Staff Appreciation Day. And the request was granted. Now therefore, I, David Mills, Cook County Board of Commissioner Chair, do hereby proclaim July 27th, 2021, as County Staff Appreciation Day in Cook County, Minnesota, and extend our thanks to the staff of our county and express deep gratitude for their commitment to excellence in public service during the COVID-19 pandemic. One thing, technicality there. I believe as board chair, I can't make a proclamation. We need it as a motion by the board. And I'm under the understanding that we would all support this proclamation. So at this point, I would like to just open it up for a motion there.
I will make that motion.
Thank you. Is there support?
Sterling support.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And it passes. Thank you, all county staff, for the endless efforts and the continued efforts. Really do appreciate it. And it's been a real long year and I hope the next year is not as long.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Please.
I'd just like to say, I'd like to send my personal thanks to all county staff for the great jobs that you all do every day. It has been a hard 16, 17 months. And not to place all of the credit on county staff's shoulder because this was really a community effort. But without the help of county staff who went above and beyond to assist in the response to the pandemic, this community would be in worse shape than it is today. And I'm so grateful for the good efforts of all county staff in helping us get through this pandemic. Well, we're not through it yet, but having helped us get to this point where we have over 70% of our residents vaccinated and we're much better off than many places in the country. So thank you all for your work and your public service. I really, really appreciate it. And I should mention, I'm springing for doughnuts on Thursday, so I'll be taking those by the LEC and the, let's see, the Highway Department and here in the courthouse. So come by and have a doughnut on me. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Yorki. Moving on the agenda, that brings us down to the public comment period. And I don't see any. Oh, Rena Rogers, of course, please.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Mr. Chair, Attorney Hickon, let's see who else, Administrator Yorki, Auditor Powers. I'm coming this morning as a citizen, even though I'm kind of jumping the boat a little bit. Seems timely to me. I probably should have written this down and I might ramble a little, but I'll do my best to keep on track. Probably 58 years ago, that seems like before at least a few people in this room were born, I took an economics class. I had no idea what was going on in that class. Somehow I got an A, which often happened to me in college. But a lot of it was like, what is that? But I do remember one key concept out of that, and that's about supply and demand. And I remember a lot of charts showing the intersection of those two things and what would happen when one would get out of sync with the other one. If you had too much supply, you know, that caused a crisis for a business. But if you had too much demand and you couldn't keep up, that also had a negative impact. And I've been thinking about that a lot lately, about that in terms of quality of life and housing in this community. And with that other curve being sort of an infinite growth in visitors to this community. And some of the impacts that are on this community, you see about them all the time on social media. You hear everybody talk about them. So there are ways to correct, you know, make a market correction. And this is not an anti-visitors comment. It's about sustainability, finding balance and making sure that we do put things in place that allow us to give people a good experience when they're here because they're not having a good experience right now. Standing in line for an hour to get a doughnut or can't go and sit inside a Spagnoli's because there's not enough employees because there's not enough housing. This is not a sustainable path we're on. So how do we make it sustainable? How do we care? We have to kind of care about all of it to make it sustainable. And so sometimes we're at the right place in the right time and there are a lot of things sort of moving. You know, if, I don't know how many of you have read the book The Tipping Point, but sometimes things are like here and it just needs something to shove it over the edge, just a little bit to make it, to make change. And we're kind of at that place. And when you're at a tipping point, it can go either way. But if we take action or we look at the opportunities around us, then sometimes we can influence the way it tips. It's kind of a critical time. We're at that time. So I know there are lots of conversations. There's groups that are talking about housing and talking about these things. But I would encourage you to take some parallel actions with that, to explore some other things so that when you get to a point where there's agreement in that conversation, you have some directions to go. You're not starting that process at the end of the conversation. I have two recommendations. One is I would have you all direct, you're very talented staff, two of them sitting at your table here, but also there's Tim Nelson in Land Services, to explore whatever possibility there is to put an ordinance in place to slow down vacation rentals or some other things like that. Maybe through zoning, maybe through ordinance. I don't know. Other places in this country have been in the same spot. Some of them have completely lost their communities and some of them have managed to make changes that kind of bring it back into line. And so I think somebody could be doing that research out there. And just kind of a point of truth here, I saw our attorney say on Facebook, if somebody asked the Commissioners to direct her to do this, she would do that research. So I'm just following up on that particular thing. I think the other big opportunity, and I really don't know what I'm talking about here, but I think Brady could help with this and perhaps Attorney Hickon as well. I saw recently that we're getting ready to talk about renewing the lodging tax again. The lodging tax is the economic engine that drives all the marketing, that's driving all the demand. And that lodging tax keeps growing because we take more houses and put them into vacation rentals. And so we're driving more demand and we're reducing our ability to match supply at the same time. So therein lies some of that. But the opportunity here is to say, is there some other, something else we can do with some of that money that's coming in, in the lodging tax? You're talking about an HRA right now. Is there a possibility that we could use a percentage of it to fund the operations of the HRA? If you can't do that, I don't know what the rules are around lodging taxes. That's why I say I don't know what I'm talking about. But maybe you could designate a percentage of it, 10%, 25% for workforce housing projects. I don't know. This is just something I was thinking about. But if you could reduce some of the drivers on demand to help, you know, balance out the supply side a little bit, you know, that might be a direction to look at. So these are just some ideas, some things I've been thinking about. Just wanted to share them this morning. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Rena. Before I say there are no other comments here, are there any other comments here? Mr. Yorki, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to let the Commissioners know I did receive yesterday a card in the mail that I'd like to read this morning. It's from Lila Brown with the Grand Murray Art Colony. And she writes, Dear James, the Art Colony wanted to reach out to you and to the county Commissioners and express a profound appreciation for the 2021 budget request allocation awarded to us in support of the Arts Festival. This year's Arts Fest was, by all reports to date, a resounding success. Visitors were thrilled and artists were thrilled. This event would not be a success without grant support to underwrite the expenses. As we do not charge admission to the public, it is vital that we are able to pay for the associated amenities and services. The county made the event possible. Thank you. Best wishes. Lila Brown. Thank you. I'll pass this around for folks to look at.
Thank you, Mr. Yorki. Are there any other public comments this morning? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. That moves us on to item four in the agenda, the consent agenda. Are there any items a Commissioner would like to pull from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Sollson. Is there support?
Sullivan supports.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moves us on to item five from the sheriff. We have a cancellation of contract here. Sheriff's not with us. Oh, Sheriff is with us here. Good morning, Sheriff. Would you like to come forward? I don't know how I missed you there. You're like a ninja.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So the Grand Portage Reservation Tribal Council contacted me a month, month and a half ago, I suppose. And due to the border closure and their reduced revenue, they asked if they could suspend the contract that we have with them for a full-time deputy up there. I discussed it with Administrator Yorki and Attorney Hickon, and we thought it best to just cancel the contract entirely until such a time where they would like to start it back up again, to help them financially and get them back on their, help get them back on their feet. And we all agreed that that was the best course of action for now. And they do wish to begin it again once they're ready to do that. And at that time, we will draft a new contract with them and get back up and running.
Thank you. Yeah, included in our packet is the letter from Grand Portage. Do any Commissioners have any questions for Sheriff Eliason at this point? All right. No, I don't. I don't either. Sorry, of course, to hear about the cancellation and of course, always look forward to any partnerships we can have with Grand Portage. So look forward to revisiting a contract in the future, but.
And I'm sorry to interrupt, but I guess I would like to add that the staff person who was working the Grand Portage Patrol position will be put back into our schedule at the Sheriff's Office at no increase to the budget. We had a full-time opening that we were unable to fill, so we will just move that person back into there.
Thank you for pointing that out as well. That's good timing for the situation. So make the best out of it. Well, without any questions from the Commissioners, I would entertain a motion to, well, I'll leave that open. Attorney Hickon, please.
I just want to point out that as part of your motion, if Commissioner moves to cancel the contract, I'd like you to just include in your motion that a waiver of the notice period for cancellation, just so it's recorded that we are bypassing the, I think it's a 90-day notice requirement for termination of the contract. And also, just so that you're aware that you would be waiving that. I've talked to Sheriff Eliason about that and I don't think he has any objections or wants to make the band wait to do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Please.
I'd like to move to accept the cancellation notice sent by Grand Portage with the notice of waiver.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. We have a motion. Is there support?
Swallison supports.
Thank you, Commissioner Swallison. Motion in support? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You, too. That brings us down to item six, the Highway Department. Good morning. And the first item is the 2022 Highway Department Draft Budget.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to present our draft 22 Highway Department Budget. I get used to the clicker. The Highway Department 2022 Budget totals $16.5 million. That is an increase of $2.2 million over last year, and that is a normal fluctuation. And that is, of course, due to engineering construction projects proposed for 2022. We can see a fluctuation of anywhere from one to sometimes $4 million or more, depending on what engineering construction is scheduled. And of course, that is all independent funding sources for the most part. My clicker doesn't seem to be working. I'll use this. The Highway Department is requesting a few changes for 2022. There is a $150,000 levy increase request. Personnel costs comprise $126,080 increase in our budget. We are also requesting an increase of $30,000 for calcium chloride, making small increases in erosion control and miscellaneous maintenance services, and increasing our capital outlay to maintain that revised equipment replacement schedule that we have discussed over the past couple of years with the Board. These line item changes total just over $263,000. And that is before we add the match that we are going to use for our facilities constructions that we have proposed for next year. To accommodate that, we are suggesting that we use $191,500 in equipment reserves and $263,357 in undesignated fund balance. You can see that we have a few other line items noted as well. Our Highway Department Budget is broken down by the categories that you see on the screen. Administration covers three staff salaries and a host of administrative expenses, including all of our engineering technician training as required by MINDOT State Aid. And that can comprise up to some years as much as $30,000 to $40,000 for them to maintain all of their certifications in order to do our construction observation. So that has to follow in their administration. Maintenance covers the salaries of all of our maintenance worker twos and threes, as well as all of the normal maintenance materials. That's everything from culverts and signs to gravel, salt, sand, calcium chloride, and so forth. The shop budget includes the wages of the foreman and the mechanic, our equipment parts, our equipment fuel, and all of our facilities, maintenance and facilities utilities at all of our locations. And then work for others/AWC is authorized work contribution. And that includes all of our billables, as well as those things that we would bill for but have been directed by the Board not to. For example, plowing the grade is one of those things that falls under AWC. Our billables, the large component, of course, is all of our fuel that runs through our Joint Powers Fuel Facility, where we bill county cars, the LEC and search and rescue, the school, MINDOT, the hospital, the airport, and so forth. As this slide shows, we use a multitude of revenue sources to operate and do our construction and maintenance. The bulk of our revenues next year will come from state aid construction at just over $3 million, state aid maintenance at 1.5 million, the transportation sales tax at $7.9 million next year if we issue our bonds, as is being discussed, and of course, the county levy at $2.49 million. In 2022, we have 10 road and bridge projects that we are proposing for potential construction, as well as two state aid maintenance projects on the docket as well. The first one is a carryover. The SRTS Trail became that when we received a grant in 2019 to construct a multimodal trail instead of a sidewalk. We ended up delaying construction from 2021 due to the GES desire to add a bus turnaround in that project area. So we will construct in 2022 because the grant, I believe, expires the end of next year. And that grant is $206,000 and the balance will come from municipal state aid construction money. The Cross River Bridge was advertised this spring, as I'm sure you remember. The bids came in significantly over the estimate at 1.5 million. So the decision was made to delay, re-advertise this fall, and hopefully obtain a more competitive price for 2022. And that is funded via the transportation sales tax. The Carlson Creek Bottomless Arch Culvert Project is another carryover. If you're new to the Board, you may wonder why we have some of that fluctuation where projects are on the docket for one year and then maybe get pushed back. You'll come to see that this happens a lot and there are so many factors that play into that. There may be a change in design that delays. There may be funding concerns. There are just so many things. And plus, we're doing the budget now for 2022 when we are still doing all of these designs. And so there are sometimes delays and funding glitches that we just can't predict for a season that's 12 months away. So these are our best estimates with the understanding that sometimes projects are delayed. Speaking of delays, County Road 45 is on the docket for 2022. We originally had it in the 2021 budget, but there were some significant concerns about what the funding cap was going to be. We have settled on $6 million. And so work comprises the sections from Babinaw Corner to the Cascade Curve, from County Road 44 intersection to Cassau 7, and then it will include construction of filtration basins at the lake and north of Babinaw Corners. Our county agreement for salt-sand storage with MINDOT will sunset at the end of 2022. We are working on designs for a small hoop structure akin to those being utilized by the state, and we are also working on plans for our failing cold storage building. Given the recent surge in steel and concrete prices, we are considering delaying construction of the cold storage building a year to hopefully see some modificate, or some downtick in those surges. Per state aid rules, the projects can be funded 59% with state aid monies, and then there is the required 40% local match. We're going to just touch briefly on a couple of bridges. We are awaiting confirmation of bridge bonds for this project, which is located on County Road 49. Engineer Haas has been actively applying for and seeking alternate funds, and we are really excited. This is one of the projects we're awaiting news on. The next one, we have actually received State Park Road funds for the Ball Club Road Junko River Bridge, and that is County Road 27. And so we will be constructing that next year. In a similar vein, we have applied for and are awaiting confirmation of bridge bonds for the Alfred Creek Bridge on County Road 28. Some of you may be familiar with the Grand Portage Timber Bridge Project. It is a collaborative effort with South Dakota State University, the Grand Portage Band of Lake Superior Chippewa, the National Park Service, and the Bureau of Ending Affairs. Engineer Haas has been working diligently on this project. It will be a cross-laminated timber structure, the first of its kind in the United States. And then I had mentioned that we had a couple of maintenance projects on the docket as well. We're trying to lessen the impact on our levy, and so we can allocate some of our state aid money if we go through the design process for both crack sealing and striping. And right now, we have $100,000 allocated for each, tentatively. And right now, we have $100,000 allocated for each tentatively. Capital expenditures, of course, have been the subject of much discussion the last few years. And as you are aware, we have extended the timeframe for equipment replacement. We're trying to utilize equipment to its fullest capacity. And so for 2022, we are requesting replacement of unit 4004, which is a 2000 Ford F-550. We are looking at a one-ton truck with box, plow, and spreader. We are proposing selling unit 5033 and replacing that backup truck with unit 5106, a 2011 Mack Granite. The purchase of a new truck would then go into the regular fleet for daily use. We have seen huge upticks in steel prices in recent weeks. And so last Wednesday, Maintenance Supervisor Dix received updated quotes. And so we have upped our budget for these two items by $18,300 just to accommodate the changes in steel prices this year. Other changes include allocating $50,000 toward the replacement of our armor radios in three years, purchasing a $52,000 tremble unit for engineering, making a scheduled excavator payment utilizing our fleet, or excuse me, our rental budget. We're just reallocating that to cover what we were already paying for and making that an actual purchase. And then we are proposing using $191,500 in reserves to keep this schedule on track for the future. Then the last major category is personnel changes. I know I'm presenting a lot of information in a short timeframe. This is pretty straightforward. As you can see, we have the 2.5% COLA and scheduled step increases and the 10% health insurance premium increase for that total of $126,080 increase. Of course, those numbers are subject to change depending on union negotiations and the provider premiums that we get notice of usually in August, I believe. And that is everything in our budget. I'm just going to open the floor to questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lisa. Yeah, that is a lot of information. Always very good information. So thank you. Questions from commissioners? Commissioner Solson?
The request as far as capital spending and what you have in there for your bridges and roads, are those along the lines of what you had put forward for, you know, your priority items, both on the capital equipment and for the roads and bridges?
Yes.
Correct. I'm just looking to see are we following, if you guys had made changes, which you always can do then, you know, based on your reviews of the equipment and the roads. And I was just looking to see if there had been any changes that you evaluated and seen.
We updated the steel, you know, when we saw the equipment increases or the cost increases like Lisa had mentioned. The nice thing is, is the plan that we had, our equipment plan we had kind of presented previously.
Correct.
Had, it was conservative, and so the increase wasn't something that was all of a sudden breaking apart what we had initially proposed for the, for the capital or for the equipment plans. You know, like Lisa had mentioned with the infrastructure work, it's tough because it's, none of it's guaranteed money, right? So we can always go after funds. It's competitive funding. The bridge bonds, it's not guaranteed. But we can go after them and keep our fingers crossed, and hopefully, you know, that's the case there. So yeah, keep your fingers and toes crossed.
One other one?
Please.
I noticed you on the cold storage building, and I know you haven't landed completely whether you're going to go forward with that or not. Just interested why you didn't, excuse me, call that out as a capital improvement.
Oh, semantics, I guess. Just, we kept the, I guess we could call it, we have our capital improvement plan. We refer to that in-house, I guess, as just our equipment, that stuff. We wanted, I guess how we're thinking about funding each is a little bit different. You know, we can utilize, like Lisa had mentioned, you know, a good chunk of state aid funds to help with the buildings, which is awesome and like a big reason why we can do it. Along with, you know, kind of our undesignated cash can go towards the buildings, and then that's its own thing. But the equipment plan is, isn't just an annual, you know, here's a one-year look at what we need. You know, it's a 30-year look.
Right.
This is the plan, you know, and so if we can get that funded and set, in theory, we never have to talk about it again outside of how's it going. Yeah, so I suppose to get back to your point, yeah, semantics.
Commissioner Solson, if I may add a comment as well. We have precedent for utilizing state aid funds. The Global Maintenance Building, which was constructed in the late 1990s, was actually constructed with that same state aid local match. In fact, we had a bond issuance through state aid that funded that. It was part of a larger bond issuance, but I guess in our mind, it's a state aid expense. And so we put it with the, with the construction projects because we can use state aid funds for it.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Way better explanation.
And a very good question. Thank you, Commissioner Solson. Any other questions? Commissioner Hawkins, please.
Yep. I want to ask about the transportation sales tax, the 7.9 million. And so when you say County Road 45 is being funded by TST, it's not our current TST. Are you talking about the future bonding?
Correct. So we would have to be bonding for that. I think conservatively, Brady and I have talked about it in the past. You know, our revenue from that is $800,000, more or less, somewhere in there. Probably more lately. But yeah, so the plan is to bond against that. A chunk of it's already taken up from the 17 project. And so now, yeah, with the 45 project, I think our capacity is still around that $6 million-ish. And so, yeah, we would be bonding against future revenues.
And when do we expect to have that come before the board for approval?
Like issuing the bonds?
Yes.
For the price of yourself?
Yes.
We, I guess we're still talking about it.
Yeah, we'll keep talking with others. We just know a lot of counties are issuing their bonds in the fall, trying to maintain that low interest rate. So they're thinking about that. That's a possibility here. So, you know, say October or something like that, but you wouldn't get the funds. You would use them until 2022. But so we're just going to watch those markets, and you'll be, you know, it'll come before you for consideration, probably September or October for that. We'll have to keep analyzing how much we've got in TST and how much is being used for cash. And it'll be a balancing act.
Yeah, I'd like to see a balance sheet.
No, totally. And I think, you know, the TST, like we had mentioned, with funding too in the past, you know, there's alternatives to a lot of things we're proposing at the moment. So I'll touch on one thing real quick. For example, the Cross River Bridge. We saw how expensive that came in. We remember all the UT signs, though, that we put up, right? So now it's UT 46. So now an option is to go after town bridge funds instead of utilizing TST funds. And then if we don't utilize TST funds for the Cross River Bridge, we can use it on four other projects if we don't get bridge bonds. So it's kind of this, everything's connected. So, yeah.
I have one more question about County Road 45. Are all the right-of-way acquisitions complete?
Nope. Working on it.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. Good questions there. Any other questions? Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes, Engineer Haas, a question about the Grand Portage Timber Bridge. You said it was, Lisa, first of its kind. That's exciting. And really exciting to hear about the collaboration between all of the entities. So what makes it different than the other bridges that we have?
It is, so for the timber construction itself, if you kind of think, so it's called CLT, cross laminated timber. It's the first of its kind in the U.S., I believe. I think Canada and maybe Europe, they've been doing it. So it's nothing new in the world, just new for us. But if you kind of think of like a Jenga tower, how that gets laid out, same thing, just in a bridge.
All right. Great. Thank you.
Basically what it is.
Can you pull pieces out?
Let's not do that administrative argument.
Well, it's glued. I have seen kind of the mass timber market changing in the U.S. too, just with construction and, you know, three stories is kind of the limit of traditional construction. And with the mass timber, they're finding it to be a lot stronger. And so I'm really excited to see it in, in bridge form, especially first in the U.S. is very exciting. Any other questions? Commissioner Starley?
Thank you. When you construct the salt covering on site, is that separate from the other piece that you're going to do? Are they all together?
The cold storage one?
Yeah.
Correct. Yeah, two different facilities. Yeah.
Okay. The one that MINDOT has is huge.
Correct.
Will that be huge?
The one we're looking at, I think, I know the pad itself that we're proposing is, like the asphalt pad is 145 feet by 90 feet. The building itself is smaller than that. That larger pad gives us space for equipment, helps with spills, you know, to keep everything contained. And so I think the building, if I remember right, was like 60 by 100. Somewhere, that rings a bell. Yeah, so somewhere in that vicinity. So, yeah, I'm not sure how big the MINDOT one is offhand. I think theirs might be wider, if I remember right, but lengthwise, it might be comparable.
And what is cold storage used for?
At the moment, right now, it's holding a few implements, trucks, when we can fit them in there, our signs. Geez, what else is in there?
Erosion control materials.
Erosion control, yeah, overflow.
Doesn't have anything to do with temperature?
No.
Cold storage.
Hence the name.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
Unregulated storage.
Good word. Thank you.
And that was the building on our tour that had holes in the roof and rot at the base and.
Correct.
Great. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Administrator Yorki.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to recognize the great work of Robbie and Lisa in managing the budget, the Highway Department, in the manner that they are. I think they're taking a really entrepreneurial approach to, to the way that they try to fund projects, making the maximum use of county state aid funding and also looking for grant opportunities. And the focus is always on keeping the levy as low as it can be. And I'm grateful for your efforts in that regard. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. Well, well done. I also had a question, just that there's 10 projects potentially in 2022. Some are smaller than others, some are big. That's a lot ambitious, and I appreciate that. It seems like we're having a harder time getting all the labor we need and all the equipment we need just as a community. And I'm just wondering, you know, what are the odds we can do all of these projects in 2022?
I mean, if they get funded, pretty high.
Awesome. Great.
No, I mean, stuff, you know, like Lisa had mentioned invariably gets delayed. And if we get to a point where, you know, it comes out that, you know, if designs take a little too long, or if we just hit a point where we're like, we're good, this is enough, you know, we can always delay things until 2023. And that's kind of what we, you know, when I look at, you know, our program over the next few years is, you know, you always kind of, I guess, I like to front-end load it, and then, you know, have things scheduled the next few years. But then if things get pushed, you know, there's always something going on. So it won't be 10 projects this year, and then two projects next year, and then 12, you know what I mean? Like, so, yeah, I'm banking on something getting delayed, I guess. It's just the nature of the work, I guess, so.
Yep.
And Chairman Mills, also, if you're wondering about staffing capabilities, you may remember that we have a vacant engineering technician position that is a longstanding vacancy. I like to tell folks in my twelve and a half years of the Highway Department, we've been fully staffed about 18 months, seriously. But we are keeping that position in the hopes that at some point we may find someone. But we also have been reallocating those funds and sourcing out some of our construction observation, our design work, using that salary to keep our program on. And so that is a very realistic view of 2023, that we'll be using those funds to their full capacity.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you for, for both of those perspectives, and I appreciate that. Just as one who bites off more than he can chew, I thought it might be a good, a good question. All right. Any other questions? Nope. Thank you very much. We get, we get to chat some more, though. We have a couple other items. Item 6B, Road Maintenance Facilities Resolution.
Yes, so this ties into kind of what we were just talking about with our facilities plans. This is more on the official side of things. So we actually need a board resolution saying we can use state aid funds to help fund our facilities. And so you can see kind of our split, 59% of the money can, or 59% of the cost of the project can utilize state aid funds. 41% requires the local match. The local match comes out of our very healthy undesignated cash fund balance, and so that's why we're able to do this. Trying to think what else. Yeah. Any questions, I guess? It's pretty.
Any questions, commissioners? I, I just really love that we have the healthy fund balance to be able to leverage those dollars. There is often criticism about having too much of a fund balance, and that is absolutely a possibility, but it really does enable us at times to, to do more, so.
It really does. And a lot of times, too, you know, when we talk about grants, if they're on the federal side of things, and even normal federal funding, if you want to call it that, is reimbursement. So we still have to have cash on hand to do things, even though we get reimbursed. And so, you know, it's another thing to keep in mind with that is, you know, there's, there's a reason there's a chunk of change sitting there, and it's so we can keep doing things.
Well, I'm grateful for you bringing that up as well because clearly, as we, you know, decide how to use reserves, having that in mind is very important, too, so. Questions, comments, commissioners? I jumped in. I didn't see any others. But otherwise, we can entertain a motion here.
I'll move to approve the construction of the salt sand storage facility with the use of state aid funds.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. Is there support?
Starley, support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. Any further discussion? Hearing or seeing none? All in favor? Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Moves us on to item 6C, the School Zone Designation Resolution.
Yeah, we brought this up at the Cal, I believe, last week. We talked about it a little bit. I actually did receive a preliminary quote back on kind of rough costs on this. I know, I think, Commissioner Hawkins, you had asked me about it, I think you did too. And so without the, it's very preliminary, obviously. That's all I wanted out of them. Without the speed feedback signs, this, you know, is looking somewhere around, all brand-new signs as well, is a little over $15,000. So the speed feedback signs themselves are probably about $4,000 just cost. So to install them, again, this is an estimate, you know, you're probably at six each. So we have a couple out there now. We'd probably have to buy two. Long story short, I can't imagine this getting over $50,000. Well, well, you know, you start with speed feedback signs and install, and, you know, there's, there's some, what's it called, the wage adjustments for utilizing state aid funds. They have to meet certain requirements to make sure we're paying fair wage. But, yeah, so I can't imagine it going over that. The, we get municipal state aid funds every year. It's about a quarter million dollars. Most of the time with that, we just roll it over into our savings account so we can keep doing more projects. So really, you know, even if we hit $50,000, it's a very affordable, very, very within-budget thing for us to do. That's the budget side of things. Obviously, designating a school zone, you know, just improves the safety in the area, creates a very coherent zone where people know, you know, we're going to put up, we kind of settled on the, you know, we can't set it at 20 miles an hour the whole time. We don't have that kind of influence. But what we can do is say, you know, specific times. And so, you know, we can put up the signs that's, you know, Monday through Friday, you know, 7:30 to 8:30, and 2 to 3, or I can't remember what they exactly say, but it's something like that. And so then that's just an easy blanket statement of these times, go 20 miles an hour. Every other time, go 30. Yeah, I think it just creates a safer and, you know, easier to understand area up there, so. Any questions on that?
I have a comment.
Sure.
I just want to thank you for your work and Andrea's work on this, because this is something that has been talked about in our community for a long time. And it's, I'm glad it's come to this point that we can address some of the issues, so. Thank you for that. I just hope it doesn't cost $50,000.
Conservative, well, judging the way things have been going, you know, I'll take the conservative estimate. I don't know if...
Any other questions from Commissioners? Or Andrea, did you, did you want to speak at all to it? Okay.
No, I'm just here to watch. And if you have questions that I can answer, I can definitely answer them, but
Thank you.
If there's anything to add.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
All right, in that case, I would entertain a motion here.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Smallsen.
I would move that we approve the school zone designation resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner Smallsen, we have a motion, is there support?
Sullivan supports.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. Any further discussion? Hearing or seeing none? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Lisa and Robbie. Have a great day. Moving on to item 7MIS. The first item is 7A, addressing the 911 service outages. Good morning, Rowan.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair, good morning, everyone. As you're probably aware, Cook County has been experiencing a, a high level of 911 outages recently. In fact, for a little context there, from late January to early June, we've had 11 outages, and we've had more since then. For the most part, these are not countywide outages, like we used to see prior to having a redundant path up the shore using an ESC fiber, but rather they're localized outages impacting individual exchanges. And I should say that the 475 exchange has been disproportionately impacted amongst these, but other exchanges have seen them as well. Locally, we've discussed this issue at the Cook County 911 Communications Committee, and subsequently at a, a meeting with key stakeholder group that included the Sheriff's Office, Emergency Management, and the Hovland Fire Department. In those meetings, several strategies to improve the current situation were discussed. And in general terms, both a, a bottom-up and a top-down strategy is where we see the most room for improvement. In terms of the bottom-up approach, a, a better awareness and understanding of these outages, and what can be done during them, by the impacted public is one area where we see we can, we can make some progress. Providing public service announcements, and even hanging door hangers with information on how to access emergency services during these outages are some of those, some of those strategies. And I, I should probably say now, for the benefit of everyone watching, that during these outages, the Sheriff's Office does page out our fire departments to staff their respective halls. And if you're unable to call 911, you may still be able to call within your own exchange to your fire hall. So someone in the 475 exchange may be able to call the, the Hovland Fire Department or the Grand Portage Fire Department, that is their, their exchange. And the same for the other exchanges, 387, 388, 663. If you are unable to call 911 or your fire hall but are able to drive, you can also go directly to the fire hall and access emergency services that way. And this is the type of information that would be included in the, the PSAs and the, the door hangers. And these would be, these steps would be in addition to actions already taken by our Sheriff's Office that include notice of 911 outages being sent out on the Sheriff's Office Facebook page and to WTIP. As far as the top-down approach, we've been actively working with our partners at the regional and state level to apply pressure on the provider, in this case, this is CenturyLink slash Lumen, one and the same. And we started by bringing it to a regional advisory committee meeting, in part to make our region aware, and our ECN reps from the state aware, but also to ask if other members were experiencing similar issues. And both ECN and our regional partners affirmed we're not alone in the region and across the state in seeing these types of outages. In fact, CenturyLink slash Lumen provides backhaul to several cell sites throughout the region and state. And some of those cell sites are FirstNet sites, and those outages have brought down FirstNet sites in addition to the landline 911 phone services that we're experiencing. And 911 and public safety wireless broadband, or FirstNet, are two key components of the ECN's program. So ECN is, is definitely aware, it's, it's very much on their radar. And following that RAC meeting, we sent that six-month report that I mentioned of the outages in Cook County to the ECN 911 Program Manager. And she's been really helpful in providing information and following up with Lumen on the details of the outages that we've had since then. We, we also learned that part of the issue in getting this resolved is that the more, majority of these outages are happening on the carrier or originating service provider side of the system. And the 911 contract that ECN holds with Lumen does not cover this more retail side of the phone system. Their contract is limited to what's called the ESI net. And it's, it's, I mention it just to say that it, it adds some complexity into resolving the issue, because it's not covered under the contract that ECN holds, so it's not something that they can just say, fix this, you're contracted to do this. And that's, that's something that they're looking at closely for future contracts. But in the, in term, we, in fact, until recently, ECN wasn't even being notified of these outages. And so the region now providing them is, is assisting them to help collect information and make a case. And where they see they can go with that, or part of the reason they want to collect that information is that their, their current approach is to reach out to the Public Utility Commission and Department of Commerce, and to hope that there's some regulatory controls that can be flexed. Since it, it doesn't fit under their contract, that's where they think they can apply some pressure. And we're hoping to see some improvement because of that. In addition to that, we, we also asked the region to draft a formal letter of support to be sent to ECN, formally asking them to assist us in finding a solution with this. And that request moved through the regional governance structure, and was approved by the Northeast Emergency Communications Board last Thursday. So that's, that's been done. And that's essentially the, the status and where we sit with the outages that were happening, and, and the steps we're taking to try to address them and improve the situation. I would stand for questions if there are any on that.
Any questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Sullivan?
I just have a comment, I attended that meeting last Thursday, and just want to thank you for the clear communication and seeking out a letter of support so that we can get this resolved. Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smallsen?
Just for my clarification, so when you say that the issues are service provider, it's, it's, and they're more regional, so it's, the provider, is it, it's in their equipment issues, is what it is. This isn't where, before, we were seeing it countywide, and it was more along, whether it was the, the dedicated line at that time without a backup, that was our issue. Now we're getting it down to the more regional equipment issues, is, is that what I understand?
Yes, yeah, that's correct, and, and I, I would probably add that's just, it's, it's, it's two-factor on that, on that front. One, we're not seeing the widespread countywide infrastructure because of where these outages are happening. They, they are typically more localized, individual exchanges. That's on the more technical side. And on the problem-solving sort of legal side of it, the, the difference here that I was referencing is that the contract that ECN or the Emergency Communications Network of the state has with the 911 provider, CenturyLink Lumen, really only pertains to this core network that they call the ESI net of the 911 system.
Okay.
And these outages, in part because of where they're happening, and which is why they're more localized and not countywide, are not covered under that piece of infrastructure. They, they somehow in their contract have parsed 911 backhaul infrastructure, major core components to individual exchanges. And so we're seeing some failures at central offices and, and other places of CenturyLink's infrastructure that is, that is causing us trouble. And unfortunately for, for us, it's not under the preview of that 911 contract. So we're having to look at other avenues to address it.
Well, I also want to thank you for your efforts on this, and it's clear to me that, that you've really gone after this from a broad perspective, and then worked your way in to better understand it. Clearly, we've learned some things from a contractual perspective that were outside of even what we control. But alerting the people and keeping them updated when they were not being updated from the, the people that we thought were going to be doing that is a key piece of this, and it, and it tells you a lot about why you have to try to control this as best you can. Sometimes we're the tail wagging the dog, but we've got to do what we can due to the significance of the issue.
Yep, all right, thank you, I appreciate that. And I, I would also add that the Sheriff's Office, Sheriff Eliason, and Lindsay Milkie, and Gary Fagerman, and, and Mike Keport here, and John Barton from the Hovland Fire Department have really been key figures in, in helping address this and move it forward. Thank you.
If I could just add a couple things?
Please.
Rowan summarized it just perfectly, if I could just speak to the Emergency Communications Board. Let's see, how can I put this? July starts my 11th year being on this, on these committees and on these boards. They, the people that are on these are super smart, super knowledgeable. When this letter, our governance moves things up to the, to the state Emergency Communications Board, and when that gets that high, things will happen. I mean, it's, I mean, it's, well, it'll be a well-written letter, and it'll, and it'll just, and it's, it was our best approach, and we just got, Commissioner Sullivan knows, we just got a ton of support and, and great discussion on it, that it, it's not only a local problem, it's a problem in other part of the state, so. So it's, great conversations. The, the board does great work. Secondly, I'd just like to add that locally here, Boreal reached out to me last week, and they are very willing to help us draft any type of media release that we want to help. I mean, not, not only from a county perspective, but from a community perspective. So Lisa Bower's working with us, so we will get, she's gonna help us get, get more information out there to keep our community safe, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keport, and that, that's in reference to kind of the broader discussion as well as acute outages, is that what Boreal's?
Yeah. Yeah, just basically what Rowan just summarized, what we're doing locally to, to
Notify.
To keep community members safe in the interim while this problem is, is being addressed.
Thank you, yeah. Commissioner Starley?
Thank you. And thank you for the good job both of you are doing, and especially, I wasn't aware that there was 911 outages, maybe it didn't affect the West End very much, but, or maybe I wasn't home that day, I don't know. And also the fact that WTIP and Boreal are the places that we look to for what's happening. But door hangers, how would you use door hangers, do you think?
So that, that item was discussed in that local stakeholder meeting that I, I referenced, and it was actually Sheriff Eliason's idea, and I, I believe the intent there, I don't want to speak for him, but was to use deputies on their regular patrol time to hang these door hangers.
Oh, okay.
I believe that was the intent there. Again, that was, I don't want to speak for him, but that was my understanding following the meeting.
For everybody to get a door hanger?
Impacted areas.
Impacted, okay.
So I think, I think specifically in this case, we were talking about the, the Hovland area, potentially Hovland, Grand Portage area, the 475 exchange has really been disproportionately impacted. I think of the, the nine out, of the 11 outages that I referenced, nine of them happened in the 475 exchange.
I requested.
So, they've, they've really had the majority of them.
Yeah. Very good, thank you.
Maybe Mike remembers it different, or has anything to add there?
No, I think you, I think you covered it, yeah. And, and Grand Portage does have a tribal council meeting this week that I will attend, and, and, you know, just kind of summarize what we spoke to today, so that the community up there is also in the know, so.
Thank you for that. Any other questions? Well, thank you, I'll let you move on to the quarterly report.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Keport.
So, as usual, this will be our, our second quarterly report of the year here, and I'll break it into three groups this time. We'll talk about the cell service project updates, and then we have a armor microwave diversity project that I'll reference, and then also our, our bidirectional amplifier updates. Starting with cell service, the AT&amp;T at Old Ski Hill, as we've reported here previously, AT&amp;T relocated from the WDSE-owned tower at the end of the old Ski Hill to the nearby county-owned tower about a year ago. Since that time, we've worked with them on a, from a structural capability and leasing perspective on updating their equipment to add 5G services. The vetting, from both the legal and structural standpoint, is done, but AT&amp;T hasn't moved forward with that project. And since we had referenced that before, I just wanted to let everyone know where we, where we stand on that one. It's, the ball is in their court, and it's approved for them to move forward if they, if they'd like to. AT&amp;T at Sawbill is another project we reported here previously. At a high level, this is a, a three-way lease agreement between Mindot, who is the tower owner, Cook County, who controls the property, and, and AT&amp;T, who is requesting to co-locate on the existing tower property. That three-way lease was signed by the Board of Commissioners on February 10th, and was fully executed by Mindot shortly after. And this particular location is one of a handful of sites where we've negotiated a revenue-sharing agreement with Mindot, again, the, the tower owner. And this particular lease, in addition to providing cell service in an area of the county that currently doesn't have any, will also bring a little more than $67,000 over a five-year period, which will be used to offset the cost of maintaining the county's communication infrastructure. The physical work at the site has been completed. So both the equipment on the tower and on the ground are in place, and we expect to see service at this location sometime in potentially late August or early September. That's our, our rough estimate timeline for that site. Moving on to Verizon at Grand Portage, both Cook County and Grand Portage have been contacted by Verizon about the possibility of building a, a new tower near the existing Grand Portage Info Tower. This is located off Joe's Road in Grand Portage. And Grand Portage is considering holding a, a public hearing or information, information session for band members to see if this is something that they would like to pursue. So it's, it's, it's up to them at, at this point to decide if that's something that the community up there would like to move forward with or not. And AT&amp;T at Gunflint is the, the last one we have here today. This lease, this is a lease that was executed at the last board meeting of 2020. And we've talked about this project several times prior to and since that lease signing. But as stated before, when a new tower is being built, we like to err on the side of over-communicating. And this lease was for a second tower to be built next to the existing Gunflint Tower, as the existing tower is not capable of accommodating the colocation request. And that work has been done. The tower and ground equipment are all in place, and the county, Cook County, will own this tower, but we negotiated initial construction costs be paid by AT&amp;T. And they will recoup these costs through the 50% rent abatement structured lease. And this eliminated a large out-of-pocket expense of building this type of infrastructure, but in owning the tower, we'll be able to facilitate colocations of any future cell providers. And we've dictated the technical specifications of the tower to ensure that it's capable of that. And so this, this tower is more than capable of accommodating additional tenants and future colocations. And as I mentioned, it physically is in place. Similar to Sawbill, we're expecting to see service in the area sometime in late August or early September. So very similar timeline for cell service for the first time in that area as well. Questions on cell service before I move on?
Doesn't look like it, thank you.
The armor microwave diversity project, just kind of high-level, the, the statewide armor radio system is its own statewide network, and that it allows, that's what allows ambulances or, or deputies on transports to... And that it allows, that's what allows ambulances or, or deputies on transports to another part of the state to call back to their hospital or dispatch. And the connected, the connectivity or connections from tower to tower that facilitate that communication are mostly made through microwave links. So diversifying or providing redundant links really improves the resilience and reliability of the armor system. And the project we're working with MinDOT on in Cook County will result in redundant microwave paths for several towers that currently don't have them. And this includes Hovland, Devilfish, Mount Maud and the mid-trail sites. This project will also reduce a significant amount of loading on the Bogus Lake Tower, moving microwave dishes off of that site, which is one of our oldest and heaviest, heavily loaded towers. This is another project that has been in the works for a long time. And in 2020, we had an analysis and design modification package ordered and installed on the mid-trail site to accommodate another microwave dish at that location. And this year, we've had structural analysis is run on both the Hovland and Mount Maud Towers. So currently, MinDOT is working on licensing with the FCC based on the findings of those recently completed analysis. And we hope to see that work completed this year. So it's another project that we, an improvement in the armor system. And, and as I mentioned, unloading on, on one of our, our more structurally limited towers to happen all this year. On the BDA projects, the Coalville BDA, this again is another long-term project. We've discussed several times. And as you'll remember, at the June 22nd board meeting, we submitted the request to purchase the actual BDA equipment. And that equipment has a 12, 10 to 12-week lead time and is on schedule. Since we were last here, however, the site has been fully developed, including the placement of a 140-foot tower that will hold the equipment. Director Rogers and I had a, an opportunity to visit the site. And I'm pleased to report that we weren't able to see the tower until we were actually at the site. That plan, the plan going forward is that, uh, once the equipment arrives and the vendor is available for installation, we'll complete that work and begin drive testing and optimization of the targeted area along Highway 61 to improve armor coverage in that area. Uh, we're looking at a, a mid to late fall timeline for the completion of this project. And the, the TOFTY BDA, we've mentioned this before, but we've worked with MinDOT Legal on approval for using the property. That lease came before the board back in April. And we'll be looking at a very similar approach that we've taken with Coalville to move forward on that one likely next year. And that concludes my report and I would stand for any questions.
Thank you, Rowan. Any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Storley?
Not a question, just a comment. I, I don't worry that you have plenty to do, first off. But I do appreciate all of these, I think you've really set a model for how to deal with the, the vendors on the towers and both on the, the building. And, and you've gone about it in a cost-effective fashion. It's impressive to me how you've gone about that. So I think you've set a model to do these things and you've done it programmatically so that we all have developed a confidence when it comes to the tower things. Something that in, in the past has been very big deal, you know, from the public's perspective. And, and you're, you've done that very, very well. And I just want to recognize that.
Thank you.
Here, here.
I want to clap.
All right. Well, without any other questions or comments.
Thank you.
That's a wrap. Thank you, Rowan. And that moves us down to item, uh, well, first, are we doing all right for, yeah, Commissioner Hawkins? Sure. Yeah, let's take a, a five-minute break. We saw Tim coming and, uh, you know.
He's got a lot of things on him.
Yeah, we gotta take a breath here.
Sorry.
Happens every time.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. More to your, yes, your, your exits.
Mentally prepared for you.
I suppose you get, yeah, this is funny.
Hi, Josh.
Hello.
I found one more thing, but just a little bit of a heads up. It may not be anything as far as our road is concerned. The fly-by role, most people in there, which are, who are, who are, part of the association. And they heard, if you could be, so.
Oh. Is that by, because I did just have something come across my desk for, um, something in the West End. Now I can't remember where, County Route 40. I don't know if that's near where you're.
Well, this would be, if you went the back way, which I wouldn't recommend, because I got stuck. Because I'm out looking at all these projects too, Sawbill Trail.
Okay.
And then what we call the Tofty Heights.
Sure. I like that. That's funny.
But there's a long road to get in there. I went in through my, where my friends live on Flyby.
Okay.
Easier. So I don't know about Ford.
No, that's fair. Okay. I was just curious if that was the same one or not. Yeah, I'm looking. It doesn't look like it does.
It would be good if it was. Some kind of housing going in there, obviously.
Yeah.
I don't know if there'd be workflows, because there's a lot of lots in Flyby.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know. I didn't see.
But a lot of it is, you wouldn't want to build that.
No. Oh, it's rocky or something or swampy.
Swampy, yeah.
All right. Well, thanks for the heads up. Yeah.
Is that street supposed to be Kenny Martin?
They're moving.
And the only way I find out is by visiting with friends.
Sure.
You know, our backyard. But I was told that how we have everything lined up. So. Yeah, I feel quite a little along the trail of the.
I guess that's representative of our county.
It's just like a lot of communication.
Yeah.
And then getting back to people like, you know, what are you seeing based on the information you have and now what are you doing?
Yeah. I think what we're going to, well, obviously there's always going to be work to do throughout the whole county. But, um, I don't know, trying to do, trying to get out more information, I guess somehow.
You know, proactive, and I was thinking about, um, the bridge up there, um, next year and just kind of a little campaign a little ahead of time.
Yeah.
Calm people's nerves.
Well, yeah, so.
And it's hard to understand because it's like the driver's.
They got, actually here, I'll show you. It's kind of neat. I have to pull it up again.
I was talking to John Schluth and he's just like.
It wasn't, it wasn't anything, you know, it was more personal.
Why I'm not riding today?
Is that what it, have you?
No, no. And that's what I was just talking radio about is like, I haven't ridden my motorcycle much lately because it's been so hot. I like the air conditioning in my truck. And that's just sad. That's really sad. So today should have been the day, but I just jumped right into the truck and it was, I was pulling out the driveway thinking, oh, good God, man, I shouldn't be riding my ride. I'm going to Oshkosh on Thursday.
Oh.
So.
Because of the show, right? It's on?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, it's on.
When is it? What's the, I've never been there.
It's generally Sunday to Sunday.
Okay.
Yeah, start doing the early fly-ins.
I saw Brennan was down there, right?
I'm leaving as soon as this meeting's over.
Yeah, yeah. I'll raise you. We're going to La Crosse.
Although my family wanted to know, does that mean you're not going to ask so many questions this morning? No, sorry. I take my job seriously.
But I keep thinking each year I should ride my bike down there. Every time I do go down there, it does rain at some point.
Well, all the more reason why, because you need it.
Oh, so I should expose myself.
Take one for the team. Come on. Take another one for the team.
Why not?
Thursday, though, that's cool.
Yeah, I go all day Friday.
So where do you stay down there, Tim?
I actually don't stay anywhere near. I stay like Stevens Point.
Oh, okay.
It's about an hour or so or two or whatever it is. It's quite a ways out. But it's where you start to get to like normal hotel prices.
We're camping at the, um.
Oh, on-site?
Well, not at the airport, but over at the seaplane base.
Okay, okay.
Because that's where his plane is.
I've thought about that too. You got to, for the campsite on the airfield though, you got to like be there, be in line and, and it's just a bad.
Tim and Wendy got there. They've got, they're over there, but we're over, we're going to be over at the seaplane base.
I thought that would be nice, you know, because then you don't, you worry about the parking once.
Yeah.
Get in, you're parked and then you can just walk everywhere you need to go, you know, through those shuttles and this and that. I've, I've done times where I parked inside the city, the town and taken a shuttle bus to the gate. That's just a.
Mostly has some stolen rate from the last year.
But it's like your motorcycle goes. Generally, I have a motorcycle a lot.
You can do what you want.
Do what you want. Get the gate open.
I think I went to the Dollywood Show once upon a time.
I did years ago, yeah.
And I haven't been to Oshkosh. I've heard all about it from Ashley. And, uh, of course Rod is, I don't know, is he always a judge or is he?
As far as I know, he's always a judge. I guess I didn't even ask Brennan this year. I just assumed.
Yeah, yeah. And that's about the extent that I know.
Yeah, I've never been and people ask me about planes. I'm like, I know nothing.
Oh, oh, yeah.
I cannot tell one plane from another. Actually Brennan was going to make me a little flash card so that I could learn.
He didn't though?
No, he didn't. We never, and I'm like, you know what? I don't care. It's not my thing. Yeah.
I have a brother-in-law like that. It's the same with cars. It's like, well, that's a, whatever going by.
I know the, a float plane and a tail dragger. I know that now.
I've never heard that term. Tail dragger. That's, I just learned something.
Now you see why I brought up the issue at the last meeting of wanting an update on nine one one. I really didn't know they were that specific to us, you know, up in Hovland. All I knew was this was going on, you know, we wouldn't go more than a couple of weeks and staff the fire hall. Here we go again. And when you got a very small number of tiers, that gets to be a problem. Because in one case, we did it for over two days, that we had to keep somebody there.
That was part of the discussion at the regional meeting, the people needing to go in and stay for the length of time.
They don't have the people.
This is nine outages over what period exactly?
Six months.
That was just over six months. And as you said, they've had more since then.
All right. Like to call the meeting back to order here. And we are on item eight, land services with Director Tim Nelson. And the first one is eight A recycling center building repairs.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair and everyone. This is actually coming kind of full circle. This is an item that has been discussed previously. And we had received quotes and bids again previously. And we wanted, and the board reflected that they wanted to provide opportunity and time for one of the local bidders to go ahead and be able to get everything in line, to be competitive and to be able to get the project, keeping the funds locally, understanding that's a good priority. However, that has not been able to materialize. And we did receive an updated quote from Four Star Construction with, with some good detail in it. And at this point, we would like to move forward with that quote. And I would just state here too, that they have as listed as alternate one to provide for a, installing a waste oil heater. We had contemplated that because, you know, the, of all the places to show, you know, environmental reuse, reduce, recycle kind of stuff that in the recycling center, if we could use, because we do have a waste oil tank that we allow the public to go ahead and dispose in, that we would be able to utilize some of that waste oil to provide some heat for the facility. However, in further evaluation of that and the fact that we can't necessarily control the quality of that consistent oil coming in and the, the maintenance that would be required, we determined that it probably would not be effective for us to proceed with the installation of a waste oil heater. So you can scratch alternate one on there, which would be a savings of a little over 30 grand anyway. So I'll just leave it at that. I know there's been a lot of work from Administrator Yorkey and the Maintenance Director Brian Silence and getting all this together. So I'll just open it up for any questions or discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. And yeah, I do appreciate the efforts put forth here. Especially our emphasis on a, on a local contractor trying to keep the dollars local. And, and we all know how busy all of our local contractors are. And so that's, there's added challenges there. And I also appreciate pivoting yet again to doing, getting it done, getting, get it, doing what we have to do here. So any, any other questions or comments from commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just.
Mr. Yorkey, please.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to add that, you know, the, the main purpose of this project is to improve working conditions for our staff at the recycling center. The loading dock area currently is uninsulated. And when those loading bays are open in the winter, we get, you know, if it's 20 degrees below zero outside, it's pretty close to that inside. And we've got our folks working in that. And part of the, the intention here is to add insulation to that section of the building to improve working conditions so that our folks aren't freezing when they're on the job. And then also making structural modifications to the building to allow for equipment to move between the processing area and the loading area. So it's, it's a pretty major project. It actually involves modifying a couple of walls, structurally modifying them, inserting new beams. And it's a pretty, pretty large undertaking. And we feel like Four Star is probably in the best position right now to, to do the work. The other thing I'll say about it is that we would expect the work to begin in September. And Four Star believes that it will take about four to five weeks. So the work would be completed before winter sets in.
Thank you, Commissioner Yorkey, on the, on the recap there. And any, any questions or comments from commissioners? Commissioner Storley, please.
Thank you. Well, after we had the tour of the building, I can visualize this a lot better. So I appreciate you reaching out locally. And, and this looks like a good, um, plan here for interior and get them cool in the summer and warm in the winter. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Storley. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Hawkins?
I guess I just want to comment that, um, I still haven't seen the building fund. So is this, um, coming out of current year building fund set-asides or building fund reserves?
Do you want to answer that too?
Do you have a plan for that?
This is actually coming out of a capital reserve fund that was for the construction of a landfill that we designated many years ago.
So this is reserves. Thank you. It, here it said building and I was like confused about that. So thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, those funds reside in the building fund.
Okay. All right.
And thank you for asking that, Commissioner Hawkins. Very good to point that out.
And I noticed that, um, we got our budget advisory agenda yesterday. And part of a discussion is this sort of thing really needs to be planned ahead. So I'm excited that we have a group that's saying, these kind of projects shouldn't just pop up in the middle of a year. We should have a plan for what do we need to do in the future? And let's not do it in the mid, middle of a budget cycle. So that's my two cents.
That's the goal.
Yes.
Yeah.
Very good. Any, any other questions or comments from commissioners? Commissioner Sullivan?
I'm just really pleased we can get this done before it gets cold. Our, our workers deserve a, a good working environment, a good area to do their job in. And so I'm thankful that we are looking at a short timeframe on this.
Here, here. All right. Uh, it seems appropriate for, to entertain a motion at this point.
I'll make the motion to accept the bid from Four Star Construction for modifications to the recycling center.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins, as their support.
Sullivan supports.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. Any further discussion? Hearing or saying none? All in favor? I oppose. Same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item eight B.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. This is an item that had actually been on the agenda for the last meeting, but. for the last meeting, but there, there was some, some questions that had come up, so we took a little bit of a break and to address a lot of those questions. So it is back on the agenda here, and the request is to go ahead and designate five hundred thousand dollars from the general funds that we have on hand, to be able to set aside for the low-interest septic loan program. And currently, just as a little bit of a background, we do have a couple funding mechanisms from the state for septic repair and upgrade. One is a grant that's provided by the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, but that, the amount of that grant is very, very small, and it is inconsistent in terms of how much we would get and how much we wouldn't, and generally, it, it's a means-tested grant, and that's mandated by the state, and so we generally are able to only process one or two systems through that particular grant. And then there's the Minnesota Department of Ag, they call the Ag BMP Low Interest Loan Program, where the counties are afforded funds from that, from the Department of Ag, and then those funds, we are allowed to go ahead and lend out. We have an ordinance and policies that are provided to you in between these, these two meetings, the last meeting and this meeting, that we have designated. There is no means testing for that, and that was done intentionally. There was a lot of contemplation when that low-interest loan program was put into place, that the goal of this plan, program is to preserve and protect the water quality of all the surface and groundwater within the county, and that's a benefit for everyone. And frankly, even some of the, some of the bigger systems, if they're failing, if we are able to go ahead and get those addressed, that provides an even bigger bang for our buck in the preservation or improvement of water quality for, for everyone. And as I may have indicated in the last meeting, I can't remember how much discussion we had, but the state of Minnesota did indicate that there will be an increase in the Ag BMP funds. However, the way that those, those funds generally work, it's much like our, what we call the SCORE grant, we get a, and have gotten a grant for decades for recycling. And what they do is they have a formula with which they base how much each county gets, and they start with a minimum amount, every county gets a minimum amount, and then they evaluate the population, size, density, everything else, to see how much more than the minimum amount that you would get. Frankly, we never get more than, than the minimum amount, because we are such a lightly populated county, so as far as the SCORE recycling goes, we've always gotten just the plain old minimum amount. And so we don't know, when they made this announcement that there's going to be increased funds going into the Ag BMP program, how that's going to affect us, or any funds that, that we may be able to get from that. I did reach out, we worked through our association and the Association of Minnesota Counties to, right now, committees be informed to discuss with MPCA, Bowser, Department of Ag for the distribution of those funds, or any increase in that, and how that would affect our county. So I'm just waiting to hear over the next several weeks, there's, there are going to be additional meetings and that, but I don't anticipate that we're going to see a whole lot more out of it going into that particular program. This, this designation of funds, we would, we are proposing to keep it completely separated, so all the accounting and everything else would be completely separate, administered separately from the current Ag BMP Low Interest Loan Program. And basically what it is, is that it's, it ends up being a special assessment on the property taxes over a ten-year period of time, and with the Ag BMP portion of it, we're allotted the funds from the state, we get to keep the interest from that. At some point, we have to return the, the base amount, since it's the state funds. With the county portion of it, we would be able to obviously keep the county and the interest funds that are accrued from it. So it's basically an investment. We look at it as being an investment into local systems, into our local water quality, and to the local contractors who would be performing the work for the upgrades of those systems. At this time, excuse me, at this time, we're still proposing to keep the standards of evaluation for the systems and the, the use of those funds the same, although they would be administered differently, but we can adopt a separate and distinct ordinance and policies for that program, the county side of it, to ensure that it's kept separate and distinct from the state. And I guess I'll take a break and see if anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. I, I really do like the type of investment that you're talking about, in, in our local contractors, in our, in our water quality, and assisting homeowners. Keep, keep things up to snuff there, so. Any, any, well, I guess, yeah, I was gonna say, any questions, but I, I did, the, the impression I had is there was concerns previously, kind of about the opportunity cost of designating this kind of dollars, and I don't know if, if we see any opportunity cost by, by utilizing the fund balance in this way, or, or is this not really?
Other lost opportunities?
Yes, yep.
I don't seem, I can't think of anything other than, we do loan to fire departments, typically to the unorganized, and even to the townships when they need extra funds. And we have one outstanding with Hovland, we've given them a hundred thousand, they've got three hundred more to go, possibly additional they may ask for, but, so that's still out there. But cash, cash-wise, I don't have the audit number, I was hoping to get that number yesterday, but I don't have it yet for 2020, but cash-wise, it looked like we were about a million eight over the seventy-five percent level in the general fund. So we're, we're pretty solid there. And keep in mind, this is a, this is a commitment, that's the technical term, and you can uncommit it if it's not used, if you need it for something else. So you could, you could commit five hundred thousand today, we could get, see what we get from Ag PMP, see what comes in from all the letters this year, we may, I mean, next year we may say, we don't need five hundred thousand. Who knows? But, so it's, it's totally within your control, so it's just not to have to come back. We've got another system, can we get another fifty thousand? It's to have a fund to be able to use, and then report back here.
Okay.
Yeah, I appreciate that, thank you. And I'm, I'm assuming too, that the five hundred thousand dollar amount is kind of your best shot at, at what a, you know, this should cover us, versus like, we need this amount. And I, I mean, there's projects in the hopper and people on the waitlist, I'm sure, for the funding, so you have some gauge and sense of that, right?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And frankly, we, we wouldn't necessarily anticipate that this is just a be-all and-all, that, that this would be the only funds, but understanding that over time it replenishes itself is, is good. What we, what we were looking at and targeting, that amount, is basically, okay, how much would be available to us? How many projects are in the hopper right now? At what point, you know, how long do we wait? We don't want to have to come back. The, the point is to try to balance all of that.
Yeah.
And we do know that there are projects in the hopper waiting. If, if everything came flooding at us, we wouldn't necessarily, I mean, we, we could use that whole entire amount up, and so we have to be, you know, judicious, but understanding the fact that it does replenish itself.
Yep.
And, and so we just felt it a reasonable ask at this particular time, understand, as Auditor Brady mentioned, it can be reclassified back, or whatever the case may be.
Yeah, thank you. Any, any other questions, or, yeah, Commissioner Hawkins?
Yeah, I, I've lost sleep over this one.
Oh.
And so I'm just going to, actually, Tim and Mitch yesterday sat down with me and went through the process. I really do appreciate the background information. Courtney in the Auditor's Office, I went back and looked at all the loans since 2013. I'm a little concerned. I, yeah, we all want clean water. I get, and I think this is a good way for us to help ensure we have clean water in Cook County, not against it. My concern is, I still haven't seen a balance sheet. Just a few years ago, we had a large levy increase because we were using up our reserves, and we weren't having a balanced budget. And now all of a sudden, we have a half a million dollars to put towards this. Okay, yay, but how did we get from there to here, and it just appeared, and is this really the best use? We've got buildings, and we've, there's lots of things coming at us. And I'm like, well, I don't know, how much do we really have to do everything that everybody's asking us for? So that's my first concern. Want clean water. Then I will go to looking at the list from 2013, and the average cost for these septics, and some of them are full, I get some of them are just minor fixes, don't cost a lot. But this five hundred thousand dollars could easily be used by five people.
Oh.
If, because there's no criteria, which ones are we going to do this year? It's a first-come, first-served basis. They have a lot on the list of, on the waiting list. Are we talking sixty thousand dollars? Are we talking twenty thousand dollars? Which ones are we going to decide is the most beneficial to fund? And then, we go to the fact that a majority, well, not in the last couple of years, there's been more homesteaded properties the last couple of years, but if you go back historically, it is mostly seasonal recreational properties. Now, just this last year, we had thirty-five homesteaded properties change classification to short-term rentals, homesteaded or long-term rental classifications. That was according to our assessor, sent a report this morning, I read. That's in one year. Now, we are talking about trying to make sure people can live and work here in Cook County. In my opinion, if you homestead here, you're using your septic system every single day. I get, short-term rentals are too, but do they deserve to use, do we need to set aside taxpayer dollars to help them fund their business? I don't know. So I'm telling you, this is where I'm struggling with, do we have the right parameters in place before we say, yeah, Mr. Nelson, take a half a million dollars and distribute it? So I'm just raising those concerns, and I'll stop there.
That's, that's great, those are, those are excellent concerns, and, yeah, I think there's still, still some things to be worked out. I did note, kind of, and I should let Director Nelson speak more, because he knows, he knows more than me about this, but the, the loan financing terms does have, and this is not for this program, this is, you know, just for the ordinance, it, the loan shall not exceed twenty-five thousand dollars for a single system. So that's one of the things I was thinking, like, is that, how does that work in, and how many does that cover? But then with the replenishment, and knowing that none of them have defaulted per se, that, that helped, helped me too, but, you know, I, I wrestle with the, the, the level of assistance or support we're giving to, to non-homesteaded too, but it, it comes down to kind of public safety and, and water quality for me, and yes, they, they're, they're ma, it's potential that a, a non-homesteaded property will benefit from it, but the, our community will certainly benefit, because I have worked on jobs where the neighbor had a vacation rental that had a failing septic that turned into a nightmare.
But isn't that our short-term rental ordinance says they have to fix it, or they lose their license? So there is a way for them.
Yep, yep.
Be shut down over that.
Yep, no, that's a good point too. But, yeah, I guess my, my, my personal take on it is to try to improve the, the situation, and, and the best that we can, without drawing those hard lines. But maybe, as you're saying, we need to draw those hard lines, because there are other, other needs as well. But I ramble. Mr. Nelson, is there, can you better address some of our concerns here, or it's hard to find that balance? But you, I know you've taken, you've spent a lot of time on this, so.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and we absolutely understand the concerns. From, from our standpoint, from environmental health, it's an easy call, because our direction, our focus is looking at the investment prospect of it. We're investing in the environment, we're investing in the water quality preservation, and, and as a matter of fact, if you're looking at short-term rentals, that being the hot topic, if those are used more, then indeed, if there is a failing system, then repairing those systems does provide a bigger bang for the buck in terms of preserving the water quality, or improving the water quality of the surface and/or groundwaters of the, of our county. The second, again, is investing in the local workforce. It keeps the projects going, it keeps the local contractors going, the money is, is staying local. If that's a focus here, we, we certainly applaud that. And it, in the fact that it's not lost money. You know, if, if the money is designated towards other projects and, and other spending, then that's money that's gone. This money is invested, it's coming back, it's not lost at all. It's, it's still there. So we understand that from a county board perspective, you have other things to consider on top of just the, you know, the preservation and investment aspects of it. So it's a bit more of an easier call for us, but this is just an attempt to strike that balance. Yeah, we, we certainly can appreciate having, you know, decipherable criteria in terms of where it is, it has been first-come, first-served. We have had special cases come up that take further review in terms of, should it be more than that amount, or, or whatever the case may be. But it's, it's, it's been very successful, and we, I have always gotten the funds back, and we haven't had any negative issues associated with it. So for, for us, it's easy to support, and, you know, figured it was just a, a good way to strike that balance between investment and return and such.
Yeah, thank you. And Commissioner Hawkins, your, your concerns about the, I guess that was also when I was talking about just opportunity cost, using the dollars, and not having for something else, but, and, and I appreciate your concern about the, the significant levy increases to replenish the fund balance. And that's how that happened. So it wasn't, it wasn't magic, and it was, and I wasn't, I was on tail end, but it was painful, we all, we all know that. And, and since then, we've passed the seventy-five percent threshold to, to maintain that, to, to help give the board some, some more direction there. And there is a, an ongoing list of other capital projects that we do need to address too. But that helps me, Director Nelson, with just the replenishment of it, and just how this can work, and knowing that we can uncommit the funds too, if, if things go, if, if they're not needed, or, or for that matter, if things are getting out of hand, I'd say, if, if that's also your concern, Commissioner Hawkins. But Commissioner Storley, I thought I saw movement over there, thank you.
Thank you. So replenishing the fund, the loans do not exceed twenty-five thousand, is that right? Individually?
Right, that's.
Okay. Of the twenty-five thousand, then how much do they pay back each year? About? A percentage?
Whatever is obtained in the loan, and, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Storley, whatever is obtained in the loan then is, then applied as a special assessment. And the natural breakout is ten years, and perhaps Brady can answer if it's, if they can opt for a shorter time period or whatever, but generally, it's ten years over time. So you take your loan, you add the three percent to it, break it out over ten years, and that's the annual special assessment.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you.
So, so just to make sure I'm understanding that as well, say you, you do the, the full twenty-five thousand, then it would be about twenty-five hundred plus interest per year special assessment on the tax, property tax, right?
Yeah. Some do get approved higher than twenty-five thousand, that's the standard.
Most get approved.
All of the, the soil and water, and then also the Board of Commissioners, right?
Right, it, it's an evaluation process, the standard is twenty-five thousand, it can be evaluated, but those are done on a case-by-case basis.
And so, perhaps, I guess, Commissioner Hawkins, to, to partially address some concerns, we need to be a little more judicious with that, because I think part of your concerns are just the number that are above that twenty-five thousand. One, one of your concerns is, right? Is that?
Yeah, there was.
Yeah, there was a property...
63?
That's worth assessed at a million dollars and they got a big chunk of money. Well, not big compared to what septic's cost now. But the cost of the septic, you can see every year goes up and up and up and up. And I think last year, I thought I had it on this, but I have it on my personal computer at home, was over... It was like $33,000 was the average of the septic loan last year. Some lower, some higher. And every year, you can see what the average is. And there were some businesses in there, some that I know are short-term rentals. They got a huge chunk because they needed a bigger system. Not saying that's bad. We want clean systems. And we want to help.
But it's the balance.
But that's a huge chunk of money that they received. And is that the most judicious way of using the money? Because... Or is there something else? I'm just asking the question.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, had that been something that was... Well, no, I suppose not. I was just going to ask. But that gets away from, as you say, the larger, the broader environmental health concerns. I was going to ask if we had looked at just doing homesteaded properties, but that, again, is not addressing the environmental concerns. That's just addressing kind of the financial impacts of addressing environmental concerns to homesteaded properties.
Well, I guess...
That's beyond your scope of things.
That's part of our decisions.
And that's part of ours, yeah.
Yeah, and thanks, Mr. Chair. Everything that we are discussing at this point in time had been a part of the discussion when we put this into place. So all of this had been contemplated. All of the options had been discussed, the level of which the loan was and the process. If something was going to go over that amount, had been discussed when we put the program initially into place. Can we do a review to determine whether there should be other criteria and aspects? Of course we can. And that's fine. You know, it's good for any program to be evaluated on that. But it was an express determination at that point to not do a means test, to have a threshold amount. And then, if anything goes above that threshold amount, then it's evaluated by a committee on a case-by-case basis and not just automatically allowed. And then, to have it open for everyone because of the investment in the environmental aspects of it. So those things were done intentionally. And so if we want to change them, that's fine. Because we do have to have a special set of documents or have a separate ordinance for the county program anyway. And we would start from like the existing ordinance, verbatim, just duplicate it, but we can tweak it as desired for the county purposes.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Yorki.
Thank you. Tim, so if a system is failing, we know that because we test we can find E. coli in the water or whatever, right?
There's a... Mr. Chair and Administrator Yorki, there is a criteria that's handed down by the state of Minnesota for determining what's failing. We don't do the water tests of any water quality. It's presumed that if it's failing, that the E. coli and contaminants are impacting the surface and groundwaters. But we actually look at the system itself. There has to be three feet of usable soils that are below the surface treatment area and any confining layer of the bedrock or the groundwater table and so on. So there's parameters that have to be met in order for it to be failing or not. Many of the systems that are actually failing don't require a whole new replacement system, but rather either just maybe need a new tank or some other type of repair. So the ones that actually end up in the loan program are the few out of the many that are deemed failing and that usually end up... And that's the one that we see in the program are the ones that are the total system replacements for that.
Gotcha. I guess where I was going with that question was that there's no way to... For example, it's a yes or no question. Is it failing or is it not failing? There's no way to say, well, this one is failing. It's got a small problem. Where this one is like really failing. It's actually releasing raw sewage into a lake, for example. There's no way to... Or at least currently, we don't grade failures in terms of being severe or minor, correct?
There are actually two levels. Once a regular failure that encompasses pretty much everything. But then there's the, what's called the imminent threat to public health, which would be if you have actual visible sewage going into the waters or something like that. Then those type of systems have to be abated within 10 days and they get 10 months to be repaired. All of the other normal failures have two full years to be repaired.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns for Mr. Nelson right now? Don't hear any or see any? It would entertain a motion. Commissioner Sullivan?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to designate $500,000 of existing fund balance for the purpose of funding the low-interest septic loan program.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. Is there support?
Starley, support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. Any further discussion? We've had a good amount. But yeah, Commissioner Hawkins, please.
No, I'm just going to say, I won't support this way. I would like to see more parameters. And it's not because I'm against clean water in Cook County.
No, right. No, I think... I think there's some nuances that you've expressed very well and I certainly appreciate. And I think we can do more work there. And Mr. Nelson has more to say too.
Just really quick, Mr. Chair, and this might help allay some of those concerns, is that as we move forward, if this does pass and we do then move forward with its own ordinance and policies to be able to administer it, it has to go through the public hearing process and adoption by this board anyway. So the board will be able to control what those parameters would be.
That's good to know.
Does that change your support?
Not at this point.
Fair enough. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes three to two. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Moving on to item 8C. Bill, is that Bill Lane? Dusy Doe?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Today, I am present before you to address Cook County's favorite finite resource, which is gravel. We have two conditional use permit requests. Engineer Haas and Maintenance Director Dix are here to accommodate any misgivings or incorrect information that I provide. This is a kind of a culmination of four previous engineers' conversations that I've had with them to bring the Maple Hill pit into compliance with the Cook County zoning ordinance and specifically Article 10.06 of the ordinance. And the issue is, is that it's been kind of a hit-and-miss operation. Been used a couple of years, went vacant a couple of years. So the activity doesn't fit into the continuing or discontinuing non-conforming use. And as suggested, I had conversations with preceding engineers about bringing it into the conditional use permit realm to make sure that there is transparency involved with county operations as opposed to private industry, that sort of thing. And fortunately, once Engineer Haas came into play, I had conversations with him and Josh, and that seemed to be the reasonable direction to proceed. And so our office has worked with them pretty diligently to bring, you know, the parameters for a public conditional use permit into play. And we finally brought it into the Planning Commission in June. And the discussions were really the same as we would have for a private industrial use. And definitely, the conversation wasn't as involved and caustic as some gravel pit requests have been, at least in my history. So it was really a formative process to make sure that the public is aware that there is transparency here, that the highway department is going to have to do the same things that private industry has to do. And an example of that is the conditions that I provided in the draft resolution. There is a wetland resource on the property. And rather than point that out as a required action by the highway department, it was just kind of suggested and that sort of thing. Well, Robbie and Josh volunteered that they would get that pit, the 39 acres delineated. They did subsequently get it delineated. The technical evaluation panel review is on Thursday. So they've done everything that we've established as conditions for this. The other offshoot of that is that as a gravel pit and per, I think it's 10.02, the zoning ordinance, they are subject to annual reviews, which we do every year, for all the permitted gravel pits. So to me, it was really a win-win situation. You know, everybody has been laudatory of the highway department, management, that sort of thing. I can just echo that because it's really important that as different departments, different entities within the regulatory units, that we all work together. And this permit being approved unanimously by the Planning Commission represents that unanimity of the effort and the transparency, which I think is important for the taxpayers of Cook County. So the Planning Commission voted unanimously to approve this conditional use permit with a recommendation that you as well offer your approval and support.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Any questions or comments? I'm very appreciative, very excited for the process and putting our organization to the same standards as private industry, I think is very important. Well, entertain a motion. Commissioner Smallson?
I would motion to approve the request for a conditional use permit to conduct gravel operations on the county property adjacent to Maple Hill Drive.
Thank you, Commissioner Smallson. I have a motion. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. Motion and support. Any further discussion? Hearing or seeing none? All in favor? Aye. Oppose, same sign? Motion passes unanimously?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lane.
Now on to the private sector gravel pit permit request. Different scenario, long-term gravel pit resource on an esker up above, adjacent to Sugarloaf Road in Schroeder Township. This is the site of Irv Hansen, his original gravel pit, which I think he started mining in the 60s, 50s maybe. So it does have that continuation, non-conforming use legacy attached to it. That's on a separate parcel. Altogether, Isaac Hansen and Sons, which is the parent organization for Isaac Hansen, represented by Tom Dwyer, owns, I believe, it's 240 acres up there. So on the Irv, the original Hansen pit, that's reaching depletion. And so it's a pretty substantial esker and it transcends the landscape up there. Schroeder Township has a pit about, I think, a quarter mile away, which has never been harvested or mined. And so that just points out the geological richness of that landscape. So what Tom Dwyer, representing Isaac Hansen and Sons, wants to do is move gravel operations west. He's got two 40-acre parcels. This specific request is for the first 40 acres. It's a dry operation, except similar to the Maple Hill pit for the highway department. There are wetland resources. And learning from the conversations with the highway department, I engaged in conversations with Mr. Dwyer before we brought this to the Planning Commission and encouraged him to initiate the wetland delineation process prior to, you know, coming to the Board of Commissioners at the least. And at the meeting in July or in June, July, it's all confused now, he announced to the Planning Commission that he had signed a contract with Northland Wetland Resources or some other agency to perform an entire 40-acre site delineation. That's critical because unlike the CCHD pit at Maple Hill, there is a lot more hydrology up at the Hansen pit. So it's critical to identify that resource, to protect it and to make sure that its connectivity with Dyer's Lake, which is a mile away, is protected. And so Tom Dwyer has been really good about that. He's included all the necessary erosion, sediment control measures, protective measures, things like that. So it's... When you get all the criteria met that are identified in the ordinance and you present it as a conditional use permit and gravel is identified as a conditional use permit in all zone districts, and you meet those thresholds, it made the vote of the Planning Commission, which was unanimous to approve, pretty clear and understandable. So the only issue, again, still kind of lingering, is when that delineation will occur. But it's a condition that he won't be able to ensue with excavation until that task is addressed. So by a five-to-zero vote, the Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of the Isaac Hansen and Sons gravel pit operations and forwarded it to the Board of Commissioners with the recommendation for your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Any questions on this side? Commissioner Starley?
Thank you. Was this talked about at the Schroeder Township by any chance?
We... Commissioner Starley, we sent notice and, you know, this is unusual that we haven't had any comments. Because Schroeder has their pit up off Sugarloaf Road and they are very diligent about the reviews and all that. But we haven't had any comments regarding the pit.
Okay.
And nor from adjacent property owners who, before this process occurred, we've had some complaints with people, but when it came to public notice and opinions and that sort of thing, we heard from nobody.
Mm-hmm. When I was at the township meetings, I didn't recall any discussion or even acknowledging anything. So I thought, well, maybe you'd, you know, on the side had gone and talked to the chairperson, but...
No. No. And so it's... Yeah, it is local government. I mean, some are accountable, some aren't, and we just don't point fingers.
So is this a new site, quite a large site for Dwyer to be able to use into the future?
Yes, technically, because it does involve two 40-acre parcels. So I think Tom's intent, and obviously with the quality of the material, I mean, there's good material up there. It's a lot of clean sand and there's... It's good. It's a little different than the highway department pit, which has a lot more clay composition and stuff. So, you know, the intent is to go into depletion. The good thing about having this as a permitted use is that as depletion occurs, restoration has to be part of that process. So it's really a fluid model. You go in, you mine, you excavate, you deplete, you restore, you move into a different section. So it's a... Ideally, it works well. And that's what our hope is. You know, once that 40 acres is depleted... The other offshoot of this too is that we did have discussions with Tom about doing more ambitious restoration of the grandfathered pit. And even though that has no application to the existing permit request, he agreed to keep that in the permit as a condition. I think it's last condition on there, just to demonstrate his good faith in kind of doing what time has not done, which is kind of repair that landscape.
And is this on Sugarloaf Road or Kramer Road?
It's accessed... You can access it from both, but Kramer Road is the most substantial access.
Is it before the railroad track, obviously?
No, it's west of that.
West of that, okay. Because I was thinking about the little lake there.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's beyond that, it wouldn't affect that.
Yeah, it's west, it's west from the railroad tracks, probably a half mile, maybe a little more.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. Any other questions or comments from Commissioners? Yeah, it was item, item 24 there about the owner-operators encouraged to accelerate, and that was discussed at the Planning Commission too, is encouraged to accelerate recovery and restoration efforts in the depleted areas of the quote-unquote grandfathered Isaac Hansen Sugarloaf pit. And so there was discussion, and I noticed Mr. Dwyer was, was fine with it, even though it doesn't apply to this. So that's great to have that kind of communication, that kind of cooperation as well.
Yes.
All right, at this point, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Smallsen.
I would motion to approve the Isaac Hansen and Sons' request for the conditional use permit to conduct gravel oper, mining operations on a property adjacent to Kramer Road.
Thank you, Commissioner Smallsen. We have a motion, is there support?
Sullivan supports.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. Any further discussion? Hearing or seeing none, all in favor? Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have eight E now, eh?
Yes, and let's talk about Adora King and Leora Douglas. I'm pleased to bring this to your attention today as a rezone request. Again, if I've worked, you know, 14 years with the preceding engineers, I've worked that long with Adora and Leora, who are property owners in Lutson on the legendary Lockport plat, which was created by Irv Hansen, I think in 1968, somewhere around there. It's, it's a, it's a historic plat. It was one of Irv's first as a developer in Cook County that went through the plating process and not just the, you know, handshake and clear your land agreement, which was preceding the plating process. So it, Adora and Leora are sisters. They purchased on a contract for deed from Irv in 1990, received clear title in 1994, and the property was never built out. It was a vacant parcel and that sort of thing. The important thing here is that in the declarations and covenants of the plat, there's a specific reference in item two of the conditions, the declarations and covenants, that that be a residential plat only. No commercial enterprises, things like that, which is, which is a pretty substantial condition, given it was kind of before the advent of, of the ordinance and the constraints identified by the ordinance. So things preceded, Adora and Leora were, were, you know, they went to separate parts of the country. I think Leora was in Florida, Adora was in California. And like any sister or brother sibling, they didn't talk a lot. So I would get calls from Adora about what can we do with this land. Leora would call me, but they, and they, so they'd talk to me, but they wouldn't talk to each other. So that kind of created a problem there. In 2005, Lutson Town Center Plan was engaged, and in that process, it was, the, the documents from that process are incredibly precise and, and informative. But what they, that Town Center Plan did was that it shifted the general commercial component of the Town Center, now called Top, or Lutson Town Center General Commercial, as opposed to the Cook County General Commercial. And they shifted that commercial overlay into the eastern part of the plat. And in talking to the sisters, there, there was never any recognition that they had been informed or been included in the discussion and things like that. So it just became that frustration for them moving into, you know, the, the last 10 years where their whole purpose at this point was to sell the property. You can't do that as it's a standalone commercial zone layer in a residential plat. So finally, in 2016, I went to the Lutson Board of Supervisors with Julie Joines-Carlson, who was the representative agent, Realtor agent. And we presented to the Lutson Town Board of Supervisors that this was a, a miszoning, if you will, because the intent was never to have that as a commercial entity, it was to have it as a residential unit per condition to the declarations and covenants. So we thought we were on that precipice of, of getting agreement, and then we couldn't get both sisters to sign off. And bless her heart, in 2021, Julie Joines-Carlson did get both sisters to sign off on it. To me, it's a no-brainer. It's, it's, I don't know what the process is for that overlay kind of superseding the county overlay or the county intent. Geographically, it isn't a good fit because there's a deep ravine separating the, the residential plat from the commercial. So Julie Joines-Carlson got the signatures, and we brought it to the Planning Commission in July. And, you know, it was, it was just kind of one of those, we don't get a lot of them, but it was one of those feel-good moments at the Planning Commission, whereas like this was the right thing to do. So the Planning Commission voted unanimously to approve the rezone and to bring it forward with the rezone configuration being the single-family residential or R1 Zone District, which was the original county overlay. That was approved unanimously and forwarded to you guys for your subsequent approval.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Thank you for the narrative there too. Pretty, pretty thorough. I appreciate the.
I lived it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I appreciate the family reconciliation as well. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Starley.
Thank you. No questions other than thank you for your persistence and to Julie. If you could see the property, it just makes so much sense not to have a ravine part of your homesteading area.
Right.
And that divides the commercial and the, and the private property. But, and it also indicates, really need to cross your eyes and, cross your Ts and dot your Is, because when Lutson Township went ahead with that downtown plan, I know they thoroughly thought through every detail, but maybe they didn't coordinate so much with the county. That would be maybe the drawback.
Yes, and Commissioner Starley, the county ultimately had to approve that overlay though. That's, that's, I'll tell you, it's frustrating because that just doesn't make sense for a diligence discovery process. And, you know, like I said, they said they were never consulted, and, you know, we take taxpayers at their word, and, and that's what was forwarded to today's presentation.
Thank goodness it's done now. Thank you.
Well, not yet.
Nearly, nearly. Any other questions? Yeah, Commissioner Hawkins.
So actually, I was rather disappointed there wasn't more discussion at the Planning Commission meeting. And I'm kind of shocked that people don't remember when this was a big controversy, when this was first mentioned. It was a two-to-one vote at the Lutson Township Board when it got, before it got sent to the Planning Commission and the County Board. I did not go back and read County Board minutes, but to know how those votes went. But this was a controversial issue back then. And the reason that was put into that commercial is because they had, they spent a lot of money on this plan, there was going to be a bridge over there, and they're going to develop their commercial district. So in your notes here, you mentioned that that area needed to be fixed. Why not fix the other two lots that are still in the commercial designation?
Commissioner Hawkins, that's a great question, and we do have the ability to initiate the rezone. But at this point, the Teschers, I believe Tescher is the other property owner, there has, there hasn't been any indication that they want to change it over to the residential unit, even though that conflicts with the declarations and covenants. The reason being because it has direct access to Highway 61, which may increase or enhance its value as a commercial property.
Okay. Just wanted to know if there was any, if that was in the works. And then, oh, and then the fact that the county was sued over this plan in 2000, what was it, 2009, the Johnson, there was a Johnson family that sued us? They were about the zoning of this area that we had to rezone. So the fact that.
Is that Land?
Uh, no.
Lance.
Lance. So the fact that the Planning Commission didn't know about that was like, hmm, I just.
But that wasn't, that wasn't the Town Center.
But it had to do with the Town Center Plan. It did. Wasn't there, but it's all related. So my next question is, so those other properties are still under the Town Center Plan, and they are LR1, Lutson Residential 1, which has certain stipulations about no short-term rentals without a conditional use permit.
Correct, yes.
And so are we saying to move it to the LR1 or the county R1?
County R1.
And I would oppose that. We should make them to match the other ones in that plat that the Town Center Board, or the Town Board said that's what they should be.
And, and I can respond, Commissioner Hawkins, the, the rest of the plat parcels are R1.
Because the Planning Commission changed it, and that LR1 was there for a purpose.
LR1 is interior from the plat.
LR1, there's LR1 and there's LR2. But those other plats in the Town Center map, there was two different areas, and it looked like those other plats to the west were LR1.
No, the, the zoning for the legendary Lutson Lockport sites is R1. Not, not LR1.
The Town Center Plan shows it differently then.
Well, but what was adopted is on our current zoning overlay, and the Lockport plat is R1.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I was all set, and then that spun my head a little bit. Thank you for that.
That's why I wish the Planning Commission would have had a little more discussion, instead of just, oh, this is an easy one.
Well, we all know there's nothing easy. That, that is a great point, and I don't know how we can take a good hold of that and, and wrap that into future discussions, but I think, I think we can, we can do our darndest there and try to keep the communication between the Township, the Planning Commission, and the Board fluid there, so.
And if I can just add, we have had conversations with the Board of Supervisors in Lutson.
Yep.
Because we see some, some things that may.
Opportunities.
Become problematic, or we don't see it as opportunities, we see it as problematic. That's why we.
Sure.
We're planning and zoning, not just procrastinating.
So maybe, yeah, I, I'm saying, this is an area where we, you identified things need to be fixed.
Correct.
Let's fix them and not keep doing this over and so. I'm going to ask Planning Commission, do some work on figuring out how we can do some areas that maybe we limit the short-term rentals, just like the envisionary process of the Lutson Town Center. We could have areas that in our county that we can look at for that.
No, I understand.
And let's fix the, fix the issues.
Well, any other comments or questions for this particular item? I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Starley.
I will make a motion to request the rezone of a parcel from Lutson Township General Commercial to a single-family residential property adjacent to the railroad drive in Lutson.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. Is there support?
Sullivan supports.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. We have a motion and support, any further discussion? Hearing or seeing none, all in favor? Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. This would move us down to item nine with the auditor, but I would ask for another five-minute recess, as I didn't proper.
I don't have a vote, but I second that.
Oh.
Point of privilege.
I was gonna say Graham, because he was looking at me. Yeah, I think that is a good, we're going to, we're going to need to do something, and I appreciate the comment because I think that's an area I wondered, you know, well, and I've talked with Commissioner Sullivan too, that's.
Yeah, we have to.
Yeah, as we move forward, this, the housing, the housing issue is a bigger issue that we're gonna have to.
Yeah, we're gonna have to at least address it.
Yep.
Yeah, that's, I had to stand, move a little, that's for sure. Well, I'm glad that property moved over. I used to work at Lockport years ago.
Oh, yeah.
Discussion about it. So.
Yeah.
Long at stake.
Yeah, we went across from Lockport, it was that old building. We finally went down.
Collapsed. We would, we would, we would sit, most of us working there on the weekends, would make bets depending on the snowfall, when it would come down.
When it was gonna happen, huh?
When did you work there, Ann?
I worked there, let's see, it would have been back about six years ago. When I first moved to the county, I was, my husband was in the Twin Cities. I was living in our little cabin without running water and traveled down to school during the week. And on the weekends, it was just like so quiet because I was pretty remote. And I thought, well, a good way to get to know people in the county would be to be in Rogers. So that's what I did at Lockport for a couple of, well, actually about three years. And I commuted from up near Maple Hill for a while, and then in the winters, it just got to the point, I didn't want to get up that early and do that far, but, but yeah, it was a good experience. Really nice.
They still are trudging along.
Yeah.
They are. I think Nan and Deb.
Yeah.
Might be getting tired, but.
Well, Nan has been tired for a few years.
Yeah.
And as soon as they got their property up on care of the lake, she backed off a little, you know, from things.
Yeah, she has, yeah. So. But you know, they're a great little restaurant.
Oh, they are. And they're so accommodating to, and just provide advice and answers when people travel through. It's a good place.
I have their itch. Did you, speaking of who has votes, Matt, did you notice this morning that I voted to approve the agenda?
I did, I saw that.
I was distracted.
I didn't, I didn't count it.
Okay.
Did you count it?
I voted.
That's good.
I find that when I go to township meetings too, when they ask for a vote.
That part, yeah.
Yeah, you have to.
Yeah, yeah.
Aye. Oops.
Well, I just granted the recess. Did you listen?
Um, this looks good.
Okay. I think that's been five minutes here. I'd like to call the meeting back to order here. We're on item nine under the auditor, and the first item is nine A, the Airport Fixed Base Operator Agreement. Auditor Powers.
Mr. Chair. Commissioners, these typically might be on the consent agenda, but I think they're on here because they can be confusing that we have this. We have two, two agreements here for the gentleman that actually runs the airport. He's under two different titles, two different agreements. And then the third one is for the, basically the bookkeeper. And all three of them come due at the same time, so these are five-year, they're all three of them, five-year agreements, starting in September and going through the next five years through the end of August 2026. And just, you know, not everybody's familiar. And just, you know, not everybody's familiar with them, but just a little background of the fixed base operator, you know, they're, they're all independent contractors. But that, that position provides service to general aviation and the general public. He actually runs a business up there, you know, fixes airplanes and tests them, and sells gas and et cetera, and we have a, this agreement, he pays us some rent on building use, and we get eighteen cents a gallon on the fuel, he gets to keep the rest, so it allows him to operate and provide that aviation service, among other things. But I think that's what distinguishes it, so I'll just, I'll stop there unless you just wanna hear them all and approve them all at the same time? Okay, so then I'll, I'll just stop here then on this one.
We had dissent here.
Sorry.
And there was, and I should say that Airport Commission Attorney Hicken spent weeks revising these. They hadn't been changed in decades.
Since 2010.
Well, I mean, prior to that, I mean, we borrowed these from somewhere else, I'm not sure anybody even remembers, so we haven't put them in, now we put them in our own language over many weeks, I saw many versions going back and forth, so.
And I just appreciate the hard work and the teamwork that everybody has been committed to. It's, it's really been a great process, and so it's nice to see finally the fruition of all the hard work.
Yeah. So, so I guess if there's any, Molly probably can answer any specific questions that were revised, if anybody has any.
Yes, Commissioner Hawkins.
And I, I appreciate your work, I am really glad these got updated, this, it was an important thing to do. I just had a little points of clarification I'm gonna ask about. So, the next one, there, I saw that there was a COLA increase included. And in the FBL contract for the sale of the gasoline, there was no built-in, how did you choose eighteen cents, or is that's where it was in 2010, and that's where it's staying? And I just think the price of aviation fuel is over five dollars a gallon now. Why, you know, how did we choose that's a fair amount? That's my first question, my second question is, has the Airport Commission ever thought about the self-fueling stations that other airports are going, are moving to? Can anybody answer those?
So, regarding self-fueling, I can say that that's not been a discussion that we've had, but there are different types of gas, I'm learning about avgas, and so that is going to be something that we would be discussing in the future.
And can you speak to the eighteen cents per gallon?
I cannot, that was, that was established and agreed upon by the committee. I can't provide any expertise on the price of the gas.
It just seems like we maybe should have a regulator in there.
But I know in the last, in the last five years, that that seemed to be a good price.
I just, I just know in asking some of those questions I had with John Bargen and Rod Roy, that they're, they're thinking about that, like, I think you'll be talking about that at some upcoming meetings, 'cause it's kind of a longer issue, they needed to get these, they had expired, basically.
They're due August 1st, right?
Yeah, but they're gonna have longer discussions on that in particular, the rental and the, and those fees, it's probably the hangers, you know, that also, that's not in these agreements, but.
So, should we postpone this until they've had those discussions? I mean, I just, I mean, we're approving a contract for five years, and then you're gonna rewrite it again? Or you may, I'm just curious about.
There, I think the, go ahead.
Oh, I was gonna say, there, there, there seems to be room in, in the agreement to modify, and so it's, it's better to have the agreement in place, and then, you know, we wanna keep, keep things moving, but it's very important to address any, any issues that come up, so I, I appreciate you bringing that up.
And that is one of the reasons that we looked at more than just rolling over numbers and dates in the contract, but we looked at language, and you'll see that the language of the contracts have changed, and also that there's parallel language in the contracts, which didn't exist previously.
One other, actually before we move on, Attorney Hicken, you had-
Yes, I want, if there is an understanding that there's an automatic COLA increase built into this contract, I wanna correct that as a misunderstanding. This agreement does not entitle the airport manager, I'm looking at the airport manager agreement now, to any automatic increase. What it promises is that the Airport Commission will review compensation for possible cost of living and/or merit adjustments, and then promises to provide notice of potential compensation changes. The notice period is for the benefit of the airport manager, in case they're deciding to drop compensation or lower compensation. It would be my position that if they were going to increase the amount, at, at least according to this contract language, they'd need to get approval from Brady, they'd need to, you know, pass it as part of their budget, it would come back in front of the board, so it is not an automatic, um, COLA increase.
Thank you, Attorney Hicken, uh, what I was gonna ask about, and maybe I'm just missing it, or I didn't see it, but was just discussions about vehicles for, for fly-ins, and if there's been any more discussion about that, and as we talk about potential fleet services for, for Cook County as a whole, if, if, if that's something that has been discussed, whether-
There has been discussion, but that's not part of these contracts.
Yep, okay, and that'll be another area potentially to amend or modify, so. All right. We're currently on item nine A, is it the board's wish to address all three in, in one motion here? Or would we like to do this one by one? In either case, I am entertaining a motion.
I'm okay with one motion, as long as I got all my, oh, no, I, I have questions about the manager contract. Okay.
Yes, please, let's, yeah, let's move on to nine B then.
Okay. But, um, so, numbers eight, so I, another one, I appreciate that you are redoing this and looking at this, I think it's an important thing, and I just wanted to clarify, okay, we did the compensation one, but then we moved down to, um, okay, that's, I took that, sorry. Eighteen and nineteen, annual review and monthly report. So, it's saying here that services shall be reviewed annually by the Airport Commission and Cook County Commissioners at the regularly scheduled May meeting. Yay, I hope that gets put on a calendar.
It does.
Okay, and so I'm looking forward to that, and since we missed May's meeting, can we maybe ask for an update in September? And then we could go six months before the next May meetings, just so that we're all on the same page of what's happening with our airport, since they, I don't think they've reported to a county commissioners meeting for quite a while. That would be a comment. That's all.
And I could bring that forward at our next meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins, and thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. I'm gonna stay open to a motion.
So, I'd like to move to approve all three agreements, the airport, airport fixed based operator, airport manager, and the airport financial officer agreements.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan, we have a motion, is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins, we have a motion and support any further discussion. Hearing none and seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And that moves us down to item nine D, fourth quarter general fund budget review. Auditor Powers.
Mr. Chair, this is the fourth quarter of 2020, which is a while ago now, but we're, we're playing catch-up in my office, I think we missed at least one quarterly report last year, and, and, and this one, with COVID and the elections, et cetera, so we're gonna catch up quickly, we're presenting this one this week. At the next meeting, we'll do the first quarter of 2021 and so forth, we'll stay on schedule from now on, so. What this is, just the operating, basically the, the departments in the general fund that get a levy, because their expenses exceed their revenues, with maybe a couple of exceptions on here, but if you look at the back, the summary under total, you'll see this is all cash basis, so these, these numbers get adjusted for accruals for the end of 19 and for the first of 2021, but on a cash basis, the revenues exceeded the budgeted expenditures by 6%, and the expenses were 3% under the budgeted expenses, so the net levy was about 88%, which kind of goes in line with the human services and, and highway, which both experienced fund balance increases last year during COVID, with some expenditures down slightly, and we were helped with federal funding, with not additional costs, so. And how this lays out, you'll just see it here, department by department, and you've got three columns there for actual expenditures, January through December, and then you've got three columns for the revenue expense, net levy for the budget, and then you can see the over and under budget amounts for revenues, expenses, and then the percentages, and on the back page, I try to explain some of the larger exceptions that you see on the front side, and I could go through each one of them, or I'll just open it up for questions, I'm guessing that would be the better way to go.
Thank you, Auditor Powers, any questions about the line-by-lines here? All right. Well, that's that, thank you for-
Yeah, I would just ask, just vote to accept the report.
Yep, open, open for that motion.
Mr. Chair, I will motion to accept the auditor's fourth quarter 2020 financial report.
Thank you, Commissioner Smallson, we have a motion, is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins, we have a motion and support, any further discussion? Looking forward to the next quarters. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item 10 Administrator, first item is 10A, the public hearing for potentially creating the HRA Administrator.
Indeed, so at last week's committee, the whole meeting, you all received information about a proposal to create a housing and redevelopment authority. As the agenda cover sheet indicates, housing is the issue that we're confronting here in Cook County. Everybody's talking about it, I think the, the implications of our current lack of housing availability, and also the, the cost of housing is creating a lot of concerns and making it difficult for, for local employers to fill positions. We've had reports of the hospital, the school district trying to recruit staff, and they get to the point where the offer's been made, and the, the recruit is looking for housing, and ultimately have to decline the offer, because there is no housing available. So, that, that's the kind of situation that we're dealing with here, it, it affects, you know, tourism and non-tourism-related businesses, and so there's, there seems to be clear public consensus on the, the need to, to create an entity whose sole focus would be to expand the availability of housing in the county, so, and the, the proposal that actually I intended to attach to this item, but in fact did not, is the same proposal that you all received last week at the committee of the whole, so you've all seen it. In any case, the, the process requires that we have a public hearing. I can't unilaterally say, well, the public wants this, so let's do it. We have to have a public hearing, so this, this item is to request your, your direction to schedule a public hearing at the next regular business meeting, which will be August 10th, for the purpose of gathering public input on the need to create a county HRA.
Thank you, Mr. Yoki. Any questions or comments from commissioners? Commissioner Smallson.
And, and is, is that appropriate to have it as part of that general meeting that we have? Or does it need its own separate meeting, I wasn't certain?
I, I believe it's appropriate to have it.
Okay, thank you.
And we can do it, either way, we do have to set the time specifically.
No, I, I'm not against it, I just wanted to make sure that we were doing it appropriately, so that, you know, we had time, there was enough time for public comments and that type of thing.
That's what I was gonna say as well, is that there is that risk of, if we get a roomful of people
That wanna talk.
That could, that could, that could disrupt the, the rest of the business meeting.
Well, and if it does, we're flexible.
Yeah, also true, I, 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 I don't, yeah, that, that was something that came to mind, but I'm not, my concern, I guess, is not, is not strong enough there to, for that disruption, but what does the, the rest of the board think here?
I think as part of our regular meeting, it would be fine.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to suggest that we schedule it at the beginning of the session, so in other words, right after the meeting is open to date 30.
Is that agreeable? All right. And in that case, I'd be open to a, a motion here.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion for a public hearing to talk about creating HRA in August. Do we need to set a date right now? Do we say the first meeting in August?
We need to say August 10th specifically, at 8:30.
10th at 8:30 AM.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner Sterling. Uh, we have a motion, is there support?
Smallson, support.
Thank you, Commissioner Smallson, motion and support, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Down to item 10B.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, this is a request to, to authorize me to enter into an agreement with Reinert and Associates for the provision of services to develop, to develop a five-year strategic plan for Cook County government. I did mention in a report at a previous meeting that we had started taking steps to update the, the SWOT and policies that all the departments had done, starting back in 2017, 2018. I was finding that with all the other things on my plate, I simply did not have the bandwidth to, to give that the time and attention that it deserves. And so I did reach out to the Association of Minnesota Counties to get some advice on firms that could assist us in the development of a strategic plan. Heather Bandine at AMC recommended Reinert and Associates, which is based in Duluth. Roger Reinert is a former state legislator, he was a state senator for a while, and he now has a firm, in addition to the other things he does, he now has a firm that works with local governments on a variety of, of planning issues. And Heather strongly recommended Roger as a, as a great resource to, to help us with this work. So, the proposal that we have is for $15,600. He would be able to start working with us probably toward the end of September. We anticipate that the process to develop the plan would be in the neighborhood of four to six months. And I would expect this board to be very actively involved in working with the firm in the development of the plan, obviously, your direction is vitally important in terms of setting the strategic direction of the organization, so that, that is what is being proposed here. And with that, I'll pause and see if there are any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Yoki, questions, yeah, Commissioner Sterling.
I don't have a specific question, other than I've been to Mr. Reinert's workshops, and he's well-versed because of his background, he, he comes with a sense of humor also, because this can be pretty heavy and pretty deep at times, so I think because of the location, too, in Duluth. So, I'm glad that Heather recommended him. him and his company.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
I'd just like to share, I was really impressed upon meeting him at AMC a couple of weeks ago, and I feel really confident about his abilities and skills.
Yeah, I thought that was pretty great to get a little preview, you know? And I realized, like, oh, okay, yeah. It's much easier to get on board knowing or meeting him. Very good. Entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to enter into an agreement with Reinert and Associates for the provision of services to develop a five-year strategic plan for Cook County.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. We have a motion, is there support?
Swalson, support.
Thank you, Commissioner Swalson. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. That moves us down to 10C for our first look at the 2020 proposed budget.
Okay. I want to start by saying everyone remain calm. So.
Don't panic.
So I just want to start out by saying a couple of things about the process. This year, we are starting the discussions about the budget a little bit earlier than we typically do. And that's, that's very intentional. We want to make sure that there's adequate time for this board to, to review what is being proposed and to make sure there's plenty of time for, for discussion. I should mention, first of all, the Budget Advisory Committee, which meets this afternoon, has not yet discussed this proposal, but they are very much a part of this, this process. And in fact, they, I mean, although I'm a rookie here and haven't been through this process with the advisory committee, I very much value their involvement in this, and I understand that they're going to be a really important sounding board and entity for providing direction in this work. So we'll be meeting with them this afternoon. But again, the, the idea is to really start this process a little earlier than we typically do, again, to allow for adequate time to address concerns that the commissioners may have. The other thing that I want to, to say about this is there, there's still some pretty key uncertainties about what we may be spending next year. And those relate primarily to, to health insurance, which I think is always the big wild card in these discussions. So this year, the Northeast Service Cooperative, which is the entity through which the county gets health insurance for its employees, is switching carriers. So until now, our provider has been Blue Cross Blue Shield of Minnesota. And starting January 1, that's going to transition to Medicaid. And so the, the first and, and key thing to, to let staff know is that that transition, we expect, will not result in any change to coverage. So we've been really diligent about making sure that the, the Medicaid plan is equivalent to the Blue Cross Blue Shield plan that we currently have. What the cost for that coverage will be are not clear yet, and we're expecting that we should have some indication of that by the end of next month. So because we don't know the actual amount of increase or very remote possibility decrease in cost, Brady's smiling over there because I.
You know that's not going to happen.
Probably not. It's not very likely. But anyway, you never know.
It'd be shocking.
I like to be optimistic. So, so until we know that, that number for sure, we are budgeting very conservatively, a 10% increase in health insurance costs, with, with the hope that it will actually be hopefully much less than that. But in terms of looking at the bottom line impact for the, again, very preliminary proposed budget, we're, we're currently at a 7% increase over last year. Now, the other thing that I want to say about that is, you know, we, we're all hearing a lot about the difficulty in that local employers are having filling positions. And this is not unique to Cook County. It's actually happening across the country, not just in tourist towns or tourist communities, but really across all, all cities, all states, and in all sectors. There's, there's a really momentous shift going on in the job market. And especially in the, in the wake of the pandemic, you're seeing employees valuing different things in terms of what they're looking for in employment. And so this is, this is going to have, this is not something that's going away. We had a really excellent presentation from Susan Brower last, or two weeks ago at the AMC conference, where she was talking about demographic shifts that are occurring in Minnesota. And one of the key things is that the baby boomers are aging out of the workforce. And this is going to have a big impact, this is going to have a big impact across the country. And so one thing that I want to keep a really clear focus on is we need to make sure that as an organization, we remain competitive in our ability to recruit talent. And that's especially true in light of some of these other challenges that we're facing regarding housing. We need to make sure that our, our staff are adequately compensated. I was looking at, I was looking for information about current inflation rates, and I just wanted to refer to a Morningstar report dated May 25th of this year. This is their 2021 inflation forecast. And basically, they are anticipating a 2021 core inflation rate of 2.5%. And they are forecasting similar increases across the 22 to 25 period. So I, I think it's really important that we recognize what's happening in the economy and to make sure that we are compensating staff appropriately. I know that in the last round of negotiations last year, where we established one-year contracts, because there was so much uncertainty about the state budget situation and also the, the impacts of the pandemic moving forward, we established one-year contracts. And our starting position for negotiating cost of living adjustments was, well, let's see, was it, I know that we were talking about a 1.6% increase, which was based on the 10-year average of the CPI increase for, for our region, but I think we may have even started lower than that.
Oh, yeah. Well, it was, when we started negotiations, it was in the midst, it was at, it was, it was the, the dark times of the pandemic. So we were starting with zero.
Yeah.
Not knowing what was happening. And then, once we learned more, once we learned about the health insurance costs, then we bumped it up to 0.86 to cover health insurance costs. And then as things became more stable, then we tried to move to that 10-year average, which is kind of a systemic change, I'd say, to, to how negotiations happen. So I didn't get much traction.
Gotcha. So, so I think moving forward, we, we know, we know the rate of inflation that we're experiencing currently. We, we know that inflation for the year is likely to be in the neighborhood of, you know, 2.5%. And just because we are going to be negotiating three-year agreements with the collective bargaining units this fall, I want to make sure that we're offering a COLA that reflects what's happening in the market and that fairly compensates staff for the work that they're doing for us. And so my proposed COLA budget for next year is 2.5%. And so that combined with the 10% increase that we're budgeting for health insurance really accounts for a significant portion of what you're seeing in terms of an increase for next year. Again, by the end of August, I expect we're going to have a clearer sense of what those insurance costs are actually going to be. I do expect that to drive down the ultimate increase rate that would be proposed. This board does not need to approve a, a preliminary budget levy until its meeting on September 14th. So we still have time to, to make adjustments. And so what I'm presenting today is by no means to be interpreted as a final budget proposal for 2022. It's really just a starting place to give you all an idea of kind of where we are and how things are shaping up. And so I will pause there. I mean, we can certainly go through the document. I guess the other thing I wanted to mention is that the budget proposal that, that you have attached to your agenda packet looks a little bit different than what you've received in past years. And what I'm trying to do is really remove any detail that doesn't have meaning. So for example, we used to have account codes showing up with these line items, and for the public, that doesn't really add to the understanding of what's happening with the budget. So I'm trying to keep this as streamlined as possible to enable everyone to understand what, what we're spending, what's being proposed. This, again, because this is a first look at the budget, there are some details that are missing. We did ask departments to, to put together cover sheets that detail the key changes and what they're going to be spending next year. We don't have all of those yet, but I expect in the next iteration of this document, those will be attached, so you can easily see what, what is happening. And so I'll pause there and see if there are any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Yoki. I really appreciate the, the change in the format. I think it's, it's very beneficial and helpful for both commissioners and the public. And we can always get more detail if, if needed or if it is helpful. One, one area that I would like more detail in that I think I've mentioned to you was just under the professional slash contract services has a significant cost. And so for, for different departments and their different services, and so it'd just be good to learn more about that. And it sounds like commissioners on the same page there. I'm sure the public would be too, so we can, we can detail that out a little bit more. But are there other items that commissioners would like to discuss in more detail here? Commissioner Swalson?
I just find in these discussions, as we go forward, you're right, there's things we don't know yet. So we've put out a bogey out there of 10% for health insurance. We've thrown out a 2.5% for discussion purposes to look at budgets. It helps me when I look at these overall, if I have an understanding of how much of the budget is that. Right? So if, if I can take those, and you can, you know, not for a today discussion, but as you go forward, then you say, okay. So I said 10% for medical insurance. If that comes to be, then that equates to this amount of that 7% that I had sitting here. Right? The 2.5% equates to this much of the total. Then I can take those, set them aside, because we know the COLA will be negotiated. That will be what we agree on as, at the completion of that process. The 10%, we won't know until we finally get the numbers. But that allows us to kind of take those, have that in our minds, set it aside, and then to go through and look at the rest of these. Because sometimes you get a little, particularly with the big numbers that keep popping up on the insurance part of it, you know, it kind of, it's a little distracting to you from that perspective. So then you can go to the others, the professional services. I saw enough of those bouncing up that it made me question, okay, these may each be appropriate, but I would end up questioning each of them.
Sure.
To see why we couldn't do that in-house, or why this is appropriate for this year, right? Because they're all going to be unique in their own aspect, I think. So I absolutely appreciate that, Chairman Mills, that, that one caught my eye. And then from that point, you really can start to get into it and look at the detail to see, you know? But I do appreciate the detail that you've put in here. This helps me tremendously to start to get a good starting point to look at it and, and understand it. That's just my perspective as we work to go forward and get better clarity.
Yep.
And I had the, I had, I think I had the insurance and COLA as it relates to the overall budget at the top of my head when we were in negotiations, and now I, I don't want to misrepresent what that, what it does represent. But, but those are very good perspectives to have just as we talk through things. So appreciate you pointing that out.
I guess one thing I would ask is, are there any particular contractual line items that, that you all have concerns about? Because perhaps Brady and I can address those today. And if not, we can come back with a more detailed report at the August 10th meeting.
Yeah, I, I think just having a more detail later on. I don't think there's anything immediate. I just really appreciate having this now to start looking at and start talking about, and, and then we can get into more detail as time goes on. But step by step here, right?
Good deal.
Yeah? Any other comments, questions?
I just want to say I appreciate Commissioner Swalson's suggestions, and we'll definitely make sure we come back at, on August 10th.
That's just how my mind has worked in the past, trying to do these kind of things. If I just, if I'm, I start to get bound up in some of the big things, and when there are things that you don't really control, you know, have a significant amount of control on.
Right.
I just got to set those aside and look at the things that I might have a little more decision on this year, next year, or, you know, or just how we will bottom.
Sure. Strategically or however. Yep.
Makes sense.
Yep.
Okay. Great. So if there are no additional questions about that, the only other thing I wanted to report on today is just to update you on the recruitment for the community center director position. So we have been working with the Minnesota State Extension Program to fill that position. I want to say publicly, thank you to the Community Center Board of Trustees and the Extension Committee, who have both been very active in, in working with, with me and with Director, Human Resources Director Pamela Dixon, and the Extension Program staff to, to conduct this process. We've gotten a lot of great input from the community, and I feel really good about the process that we're running. Where we are right now is we have asked six candidates to submit video interviews that we're in the process of reviewing. The Extension Office in, in St. Paul is taking steps to, actually Minneapolis, it's at there, on campus.
Oh, I think it is in St. Paul, actually.
Big campuses.
Coffee, Coffee Hall.
Okay.
University.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Twin Cities, though.
Thanks, thanks for the clarification. So they're, they're working on setting dates for us to actually interview the, the top three candidates. And we expect to be able to make an offer to, to one of those candidates shortly after those interviews are conducted. So that, that's where we are. The other thing to know is that Diane Booth has graciously agreed to come back as, as her schedule permits, probably once a week, to help with the transition to, to the new person. So that process is moving forward. I guess the other thing that I'll mention, because you have approved Rena Rogers' resignation, is that we are moving forward with recruitment, or shortly will be moving forward with recruitment for that position, and we expect that to be an internal process. So that is all I have for now, and I would answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Comments? I would just comment that I've been involved with the, the search committee for extension director, and I am very pleased with it thus far. And this is maybe the fourth or fifth kind of higher level search committee that I've had the opportunity, been a part of since being elected, which was not that long ago. And, and this one has given me a lot of confidence and, and just impressed me significantly. So I'm hoping, hoping for a good result here. Great, great applicants as well.
Yep.
Okey dokey. Moving on to item 11, employee concerns slash commissioner concerns. 11A is commissioner reports slash meeting updates. Any reports or updates from any commissioners? Commissioner Storley?
Yesterday, and I believe, James, you attended the opioid settlement?
I did, yes.
I didn't know if anybody else did. It's all on AMC, so you can, we had some really good presentations by four different groups, and it's only beginning. And I was amazed at all the pharmaceuticals involved in it and some of the reasons they did for pushing. It's very sad. But anyway, it was good. It's only at the beginning. Settlements will be out over a period of nine to 18 years. So, but the important part of that was counties really need to be involved. So the comments at, toward the end in the chat was, you know, look at your social services, and maybe for our county, that would be the place to discuss with them what their view is and how they've been affected here, because that will affect the settlement. So when we get more from AMC and so forth. So, when we get more from AMC and so forth, probably in our conferences, we'll know kind of what direction to go or what they're going to help us with. But it was very revealing in there. And there's been articles in the Tribune, too, but it was, it's the beginning.
Was the state attorney general's office involved in that conversation?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. I was able to attend a different one earlier on, and they didn't know as much. They were more looking for feedback on the use of a settlement. It was already presumed that there would be a significant. And a lot of the feedback, I mean, much of the feedback was on the preventative side of things. How do we prevent these addictions? And that's a very, very broad question, that far-reaching, as I think it's been noted a couple of times in this meeting, everything is connected, you know? If someone doesn't have a place to live, that can lead to addiction. Or if they don't have a good, if they have a place to live, but they don't have a supportive family, that can lead to addiction. Just a lot, many, many factors. So, I'm hoping that we're able to use, settle, I need to help with public health and public health education, or housing for that matter. It might be far, a stretch for some, but I think it can apply pretty directly and easily. So, we'll see how that, how that pans out. But I thank you for being in that conversation. Any other updates or reports from commissioners?
I guess the only other thing, the only other item I just wanted to just take a second to speak on, we saw the Highway Department come in today and lay out their budget for next year, and they did confirm that, you know, the equipment and the roads and bridges were per the plan that they had put together. Great plan, goes out for many years. But remember, when they reviewed that plan with us, they made the comment that our current budgeting process as it's set up does not support the plan, right? And so, it's just, it's just another pitch that the sooner we can come together with that whole picture of capital improvements and plans that lays out with a prioritization. I really don't have a problem, because I know the hard work that they put in to lay this out. And I mean, I dug into that hard and couldn't find a single thing that I would have changed in there or even challenged. And so, you know, I have no problem doing that. But to the discussion we had earlier, there's risks involved there without, until we get that plan and have a better picture of it. And I think that's part of what the anxiety is over on my left here of, needs a better roadmap to be able to say yes or no on some of these asks that are coming in. That's all. Thank you.
That's a very good point, a very good clarification on your vote, too. I appreciate that, and I can't disagree on that need.
Yeah.
And the benefit of, you know, fleshing that out, so.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, speaking of contractual items, in my budget proposal for next year for my department, I have set aside some money, or have requested, rather, to fund that process. So, if we need to consult with others, for example, if we need to maybe pay for some additional time with the world to update our capital improvement plan, we're able to do so. Because I agree strongly with your suggestion that we need to get that done as soon as possible, so.
Great, thank you.
And I also want to note that the Budget Advisory Committee has agreed to serve as, is also the Building Advisory Committee, so.
Oh, great.
Yep.
Boy, that's, yeah, good.
So, which, there's a clear connection there.
Absolutely.
So, I'm grateful to them for taking that on.
Any other things to note, meetings, reports? Only one other thing is, I just want to thank our new commissioners for attending the AMC Conference, and it was a really good team-building exercise. And I'm hoping we can do more board development in the future. And just how we do that exactly, it's not clear. But it's, but what is clear is how valuable that is and how that'll really help identify our strategy moving forward and getting on the same page. So, we'll keep rolling that around, I guess, for the time being. And please feel free to, if you have specific suggestions for that board development, please share them, and we can, you know, work on making that happen, too. Whether it's just lunch after meetings, or if it's whatever, hang out on a weekend or whatever, just the key is to notify the public that we're going to be doing it, and then we can have, we can have open discussions. We won't be taking action, clearly, but, yeah, so, thank you.
I did think that was a great, at least it was an eye-opening learning for me from other commissioners in other places, when they had a large change in their boards, that they basically just posted that at the end of this meeting, the commissioners are going to have lunch, or, you know, commissioners and the administrator are going to have lunch at this facility. And so, if anybody wants to come, and then the realization that, and nobody showed up, you know? But, but it's, you know, because that wouldn't have even entered my mind, or if it did, I would have said, well, no, we can't do that, you know?
It's been mulled around a long time, and when you go, and when you go to the conferences, it's like, you do that? And nobody says anything? Yeah, because nobody shows up.
Right? Yeah, it's interesting.
Yeah, I'm glad you're encouraged to do that, because I think that's important.
I do, too.
All right, well, we can move on to meetings to note. We have our Community Leadership Committee, August 12th, 5:30. There's the Zoom link there. And correspondence and memos, a very key indicator in our community is the lodging tax, and had public comment about this. And I think we all are hoping to address, are open, are open to addressing housing, trying to leverage this somehow or another. And I just want to say that I think it could be a really smart move to try to tie this into some housing funding. My real concern is when we went through the tax classification for short-term rentals, it was not an easy process to get our community into an agreeable place. Lot of different voices, lot of different players, lot of different perspectives. But we were able to do it, and it wasn't that painful, it just wasn't the easiest thing. And boy, did we feel good and patted ourselves on the back and all that. And then, it went down to the state, and then it was out of our hands, more or less. We did have Chamber involved down there with their consultant and to try to help navigate that. But it turns into a statewide issue with many, many more players, with many different perspectives, many different economies, and many different lobbyists. And so, it gets pretty messy pretty quick. And so, that's one thing that I feel like I learned from that process. And so, it makes me very nervous to, because if we do request some kind of change to this structure, it enters that process. And so, that's why I like the idea more of something separate, but I just don't know the best way to navigate that. And if that's going to make, if that's going to make it any easier or any cleaner or just more complicated, it's not clear to me. But that's, that's kind of my inkling on that. And, but it makes a lot of sense to somehow tie our booming lodging tax to meet the needs of our deficient housing in the county, so. But these numbers are crazy, just up, 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 and even with, even with the pandemic. So, it's great, good problem to have, I think, as far as how to deal with that. But, but again, how to deal with it is tricky in my mind, so. There goes my, there's my rant on that. Anyone else have any, any comments on that, or, you know, ideas, thoughts, just?
Be patient with the legislators.
Yes, there's that, too. Thank you.
They have, they have a lot on their plate that they think are important.
Yes.
But we just need to keep kind of poking away, have Judy poke away and Chamber, and maybe be there once in a while when we know it's going to come on the floor. You know, write letters, that's easy to do, send notes.
I agree to a certain extent, and I understand where you're coming from, but I kind of think we're not alone right now with this issue.
Yeah.
I talked to quite a few people, other commissioners down at AMC. There is a housing issue all over. So, I don't think if we could figure out a way to work together, that we can't figure out a way to make the legislature understand.
Yep.
We, as counties, need this. And, yeah, there's lots of ways, there's lots of facets to this. It's not, I wish it was a cut-and-dried issue, but there's all these things. But I, I know the process last time with the reclassification was messy and hard, but I kind of would like to see us have those kind of discussions about the 1% again, that way. Because there are issues on both sides that need to be taken into account, and we can't let the loud voices on one side dominate. We need to make sure, and that's what I felt the last time, that when we finally sat down in one place, we all came, came up with an agreement we all agreed with. And that's what it takes, hard work. And I'd kind of like for us to have those discussions for this new idea.
That's a great, that's a great point, and, yeah, I appreciate that. I think, I think that'd be worthwhile. And there is no harm in starting that.
Mm-hmm.
My fear is the harm in once it gets out of our hands, right? That's my fear. And, but, but that's, that's a long ways away. So, there's a lot of work that could happen before that point, and then we could explore options and see, so. Maybe we should schedule a work session and invite partners, community partners and stakeholders into that.
Well, I was just going to say, we do have an opportunity that's coming up here as well, when our state representatives join us to have discussions. But we would need to have some ideas before we can float those to them, right? And I'm sure they would give the same caution they did last time, because I watched that meeting where they were here, and they said that that gets really challenging and messy when you want to make changes to tax codes. And there's just a lot of different things that go into each of those, and different thoughts, and different advocates for pieces of them, so. But, yeah, I think getting, getting their thoughts and advice, we were, we were still, I think Cook County really helped move that process forward by moving that down to them because others then realized, no, we, our community needs that, too. And so, then something happened.
Yeah, at the end of the day, I think it worked out, you know?
I think we led in that issue, so.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Both that and the end product, I thought, was a benefit.
So, I'm not, I'm not shy about at least having the discussion and teeing it up. Nothing ventured, nothing gained on that front.
Yeah.
And it's, you know, we'll have our discussion and our input from the public on the HRA, but I think there's 400 and some of those in Minnesota right now, and each of those districts would tell you that that's not the answer in and of itself. We have to continue to, you know, do each of the pieces to make the whole improve.
Yep.
So, each of these things, we need to take into consideration.
Yeah, I would like to, I would like to be able to have that unified voice, or at least those preliminary discussions to be able to talk with our legislators.
Missed opportunity if we're not able to have that discussion with them. Or at least be able to tee it up with some, some thoughts.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I heard you suggest that we schedule a work session to have that conversation. Is that something you'd want to do at the August Committee of the Whole?
I think that'd be great. I was just looking at the calendar, and I don't know what else is upcoming on that particular day, but I think it will take quite a lot of our time for that discussion. But if we can make that work at the Committee of the Whole, I think that would be wonderful.
Sure.
Yeah.
I'll put it on the agenda.
And I don't know who we want to have as, as the stakeholders. It's almost the same players as the short-term rental discussion, so I guess we can talk more about that, but, yeah, I'm trying to think about if there's even any crossover language or points in those discussions, but, okay, we'll work on that, and if we can schedule that for the Committee of the Whole, that'd be, that'd be wonderful. Any other thoughts right now? Okay. In that case, we're at item 13 on the agenda, which is adjournment. Entertain a motion.
I move to adjourn.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins.
I'll support.
All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.
Molly, I like your water bottle.
Okay.
Oh, thank you.